Moving on with section four, we have presentation petitions and delegations. And it is my pleasure this morning to welcome Kimberly Earle's Executive Director of the South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation, accompanied by Alison Warwick, I believe still the current Chair. Not yet. So, welcome and please carry on with your presentation.
Well, thank you. My mic working? Yep, okay. Thank you, Ed or Warden Ketchba, sorry, for that introduction. And it's great to see some familiar faces and some new faces around the table and best of luck for your oncoming year this term. And we'll turn it over to Kim because she's going to, well, actually, no, I'm going to start. So I'm going to get you know about the background of this economic development group. We came together because council of the day recognized that a strong member-based partnership would benefit their individual counties in the region in the long term. And it's all about the long term. It's about building relationships and working and leveraging those relationships as changes come through the province and and counties and municipalities have to deal with them. So the governance model is that there's two appointed council members from each county. There's two staff appointments for committees and implementation, input of projects, initiatives and regional needs. We meet every other month. And attendance at AMO and Roma and other events are helpful as well to support advocacy. And I know there's some people around the table here that have been on the meetings that we've had with the ministers, the different problems that we've been representing or we have very good relationship with our provincial ministers and staff. And SCORE has always been a go-to for them to get information for what's happening on the ground. So we really do have a lot of respect for the province that way. And we gain a lot of respect from the province. So we act as a conduit of information back to council and forward to SCORE. It's funny, I was this morning, I was thinking, thinking about, you know, as your role as a representative for your municipalities, your job so much tends to be drawn to looking in all the time to municipalities where people are asking you to do something for them within the municipality. And our job as SCORE members is to look out all the time. So we're the people that are looking out and we help you with that that perspective. Because it's easy to get drawn to by road needs to be paved or this that needs to be done. And there's a lot more going on at the same time. So we're there for you for that. And our focus tends to be that larger regional issues that have an impact on the region. But we'd be difficult for one municipality to tackle on their own. We share resources and we're a very strong voice for advocacy and making progress on larger issues and opportunities. So the infrastructure, Kim, is this your slide?
Yeah. Thank you. So one of our areas focus is infrastructure that supports economic development. And this year, we, over the past probably two to three years, we've really honed in on that transportation piece. So community transportation, supplying supports and recommendations to the province on regional planning. And of course rail and ensuring that we have good, strong transportation supply lines. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Next slide, please. And so part of the, one of the big parts of the transportation portfolio is again, that community transportation piece. And I know here in Elgin, many of the surrounding areas received funding through the Community Transportation Pilot Program. Unfortunately, Elgin did not. However, because we have that regional perspective, we're able to service some communities. Certainly Bayham is served through the Tillsenberg Transit piece. And, sorry, I'm losing my voice. This last year, we, as well as Middlesex County, received funding through the Rural Transit Solutions Fund, which is federal funding that we were able to comment on and provide information for the program. And in both of those needs analysis, looking at transportation needs from a regional perspective, we recognize the need to serve Elgin County and specifically sort of through Elmer along that Highway Three corridor. And both of those projects have noted the importance of helping provide service to the Amazon plant. And so that's again, kind of that regional perspective that Allison was speaking about. Next slide, please. Again, just that community transportation piece, we created the SCT, which is Southwest Community Transit. And again, it is a conduit in which community transportation service providers across the region can share information. We can align routing where possible. So if you're, you know, if there's a route in Tillsenberg and they need to go down to Port Burrow or into Elmer, that the timing is as close as possible. So and looking at providing supports to other community assets such as the four counties' community transit. I've had some great conversations with folks there. They have very specific needs and service providers. But again, providing that basis of, you know, what would an RFP look like? What are the legal requirements? Just those really technical pieces that maybe they might not have the expertise on on their own to do. Just having that larger group is helpful. Next slide, please. And then finally, the rail. We've had the opportunity to speak to you before about rail. We're still waiting to hear back from the National Trade Corridor Fund, which we made application to. And again, that that is, that short line rail piece really looks to shore up our regional supply chains, ensuring that we have good infrastructure in place for agricultural sector. And again, a lot of that happens here in in Elgin County at the Elmer Ethanol Plant, as well as manufacturing facilities across sort of that Huguega sub corridor that runs roughly from St. Thomas into Portland in Norfolk County. Next slide, please.
Right, so I'm back on the screen again. So human capital, workforce development. We collaborate to create long-term effective, cost-effective solutions for barriers to workforce development. We partner with workforce planning boards, business associations and community groups. You also see Kim as part of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and as a part of that. So we do spend a lot of time networking with our fellow economic groups and make sure that, you know, we're getting all the information we can. And I think the workforce planning board piece is important too. You know, getting people, you know, for example, the community transportation is getting people to jobs that are available and seeing what jobs are available and what what people are struggling with. Are they struggling with getting correct type of employment? Are they struggling to get people there? And you know, those things partner with many other things in your your term to come. Education, we also partner with post-secondary institutions to ensure we are sharing information so that training and education partners are focusing on programs that meet business needs in our region. And we put supports in place such as housing and transportation. And next slide, please. So our agricultural and food sector, we've been very busy with this and it's been a very rewarding partnership. The first one with Conestoga College, and that was with the agricultural equipment operator. This gives people a chance that aren't necessarily born in a farm family to learn how to operate the equipment that's becoming more and more technical. And it's a good refresher for people that are on the farm as well. But this allows new people to come into agricultural sector that are trained properly and trained safely. And I think that's a huge. I know anybody that's been operating farm equipment lately knows you almost need a degree to run them. So it's important to do that. So the agribusiness management program too, and that's something that we've partnered with Fanchow College has been a success to getting new new people into that sector. Next slide, please. So the advocacy and success, the Southwest Ontario Development Fund is something that we're very proud of. The MTO Community Transportation Pilot Project, the Federal Rural Transit Solutions Fund have been successful for us. We've been supporting agriculture and workforce. We had leadership during the pandemic. And also the Sand Plains Community Development Fund, which was our original. Anybody that's been around the table for a while knows the story is that when the tobacco industry was greatly modified, there was a lot of people that were left without. And this fund helped people get their back on their feet, reform what they're doing and give a lot of people opportunity to start businesses that the bank maybe not have funded them for, but have been very successful. Partnership. So partnership cremate, hopefully not cremates, creates immediate value, but more importantly cumulative value over time. And that's what we mean, that we've been at this game for a long time now. And I think even our members know that it's not a short-term fix, although we can, we've done some things like that. It's the long term, finding out what's going on, looking at the trends, supporting the trends. You know, some of these projects exceed the term of a council. So it's important that we keep going, you know, regardless of who's at the table of that day. Action-oriented organization with focus on strategic planning and implementation. SCORE is widely recognized with a positive reputation as a region. And we have the ability to tackle projects and issues that are larger in scale than more than one individual or municipality can take on individually. And that's kind of what I meant about looking out. And and you know, as I said before, it's easy to get drawn looking in. It's important to keep looking out because there's a lot going on out there. And we're small enough to reach a consensus and move forward on areas of focus. And we have the ability to attract and leverage funding on a regional scale. So the regional vision, Elgin County is an integral part of the region. Regional organizations that focus on complex, long-term planning require partner commitment for long-term planning. An organization like SCORE underpins long-term confidence in a region and provides a vehicle in place for investment and tackling large issues as they arise. And I know you have an extremely long and busy day ahead of you. So that ends our presentation, but we are here for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Alison and Kim for that presentation. I am going to open it up to members of council. If you have any questions for our delegates.
Still early in the morning by the looks of it.
Yes, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You mentioned housing and a couple of slides. Do you have more specifics on what's your, what's on your radar? We're hearing in the news now regularly employers, when they do find workforce, then there's no place for them to live. So what will be on your radar this year?
Thank you so much through the warden to you, counselor. We have been working really closely over the past decade, really with Rural Ontario Institute on a lot of the, their workforce-related issues, but they end up looking like transportation or they end up looking like housing. And one of the things that you will see roll out if anyone's attending Roma is the Rural Housing Information Systems Initiative. So we've supported ROI in, before we can really tackle the housing issue in a sort of a systemic way, we need to know what we have, what is out there, what sort of our metrics across the housing within various regions. And so we're really pleased to be working with them as they roll that out. And so sometimes SCORE's role is supportive, not always leading.
And in addition to that, I would say that, you know, knowing that the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, one of their big focuses here is this housing. And we have been supporting them with that information and getting data to them to to get that report on the go for this year. It's one of their priorities. So happy to support them there too.
Yes, Counselor McPhail.
Well, through the warden to Counselor McPhail, thank you very much for that. That's very, very nice of you to say. I am still Chair until there's a new Chair elected. And as you know, I'm retired from my previous life in municipal politics. But I look forward to supporting SCORE in any way I can in the future. And I'll always follow what they're doing because I truly believe it's been a great service that I've been involved with for a long time. So. Thank you.
Yes, Julie?
Just a quick reminder to council. So council does invest in a $25,000 annual membership in SCORE and that will form part of your budget discussions this afternoon. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for a reminder. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, again, thank you very much for the presentation. And have a great day.
Thank you. Nice seeing you all.
Have a motion?
Be it resolved that the presentation from the Executive Director of South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation, or SCORE EDC, be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens will move, Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into Committee of the whole.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Shiger, Counselor McPhail will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Section six, reports of council, the first is 6.1 from me. County Council Committee Appointments. Okay. The, the, the report is before you. And I thank all of council members for their patience and for their willingness to serve on the various committees. If you want to jump over to Appendix One, which would give a highlight of those committees that you have engaged yourself to. And if there are no errors or any questions, we can move on with report and dispense with this. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through possibly Julie or yourself with regards to the health recruitment partnership and the possibility of a second appointment. That entails approval of the committee, I believe, in City St. Thomas as well. So if we approve it, it's not, it still has to go through the channels, correct?
Correct, yes. That second appointment is subject to, as you say, the approval of the the committee in the City of St. Thomas. But from what I understand, it looks positive. Any additional questions? Please, please read the motion.
Be it resolved that County Council approved the council committee and local board board appointments for 2023 as recommended by Warden Ketchupah.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble will move and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. 6.2 Tree Commissioner Weed Inspector Quarterly Report, July to September 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and then good morning to you and the rest of Elgin County Council. Can you hear me okay?
We can now.
I'm having trouble hearing you, so I have my apologies. Yeah, before you is my report from July to September of 2022. As you can see, harvest applications submitted were up slightly during that period of time. And the the volume of wood harvested was nearly double over that period of time comparing it to 2021. Four weed complaints were received in the third quarter. Two of them were for Canada Fleabane, which were not regulated weeds by the Weed Control Act. The other two were destroyed by the landowner when discussed. As far as industry news goes, and after talking to a couple of my neighboring weed inspectors, I thought it might be a good idea to bring forward just some information on dog strangling vine. Haven't found it yet in Elgin County. Hopefully it's not here. But talking to my neighboring weed inspectors, it's a nasty one if it gets established. Really impacts even ability of grazing animals to move about pasture land and can really choke out a lot of crops. It is a weed in the milkweed family. So it has a lot of similarities to it, even though it's not milkweed. And it is, it is a vine that grows back readily, if not controlled properly. And also of consideration to it can negatively impact the monarch butterfly because it mistakes the leaves of this plant for our more common milkweeds in this area. And it doesn't, it doesn't provide any benefit to the larvae of the monarch butterfly. So if I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you for the report, Jeff. Is there any questions for Jeff? Counselor McPhail.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Again, Jeff, when you speak of control of this, the species, is it something that, you know, like fleabane is roundup resistant? Or is it something that traditional control methods will work?
I, my belief is that there are traditional control methods, meaning herbicides will control it. It's just the way it grows, it can easily outpace it and you need to be on top of it on a regular basis. It has an excessive growth rate.
Any additional questions for Jeff? Counselor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, through to Jeff. As far as the flea being goes, there isn't much traditional, easy herbicides to kill it. It's getting to be a very expensive, very invasive plant. And it really takes some pretty hot chemicals to kill it. So anything we could do to slow it down because it's really growing fast on our way anyways.
It, it has become, you know, 10 years ago, giant hogweed was the the most common weed complaint that I received. But the last couple of years, fleabane's starting to to move up and move up with numbers.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Tree Commissioner Weed Inspector Quarterly Report, July to September 2022, from the Tree Commissioner and Weed Inspector, dated December 5th, 2022, be received and filed for information.
Moved by Counselor Jones. Second by Counselor Hens. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
6.2 Manager Procurement and Risk Procurement Activity Quarterly Report, Q3. Mike?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to County Council. So this quarterly procurement activity report details the award of contracts approved by directors by between $15,000 and $250,000. This report covers the period from July to September of last year. The list of the projects, the supplier and the amounts is attached as Appendix A. And I'll just note the majority of the projects during this timeframe do relate to the furniture and equipment for Terrace Lodge and also service contract extensions. All contracts comply with the county's procurement policy. And at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you for a report, Mike. Any questions? Seeing none, Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Procurement Activity Report, Q3, July 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2022, dated November 16th, 2022, from the Manager of Procurement and Risk, be received and filed for information.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Shiger will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with section six, four, Accessibility Coordinator, Annual Council Committee Update.
Thank you, Warden. Through the warden to members of councils, the reporters hash highlight some of the accomplishments that the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee achieved this past year and also outlined some of the changes that are being proposed to the terms of reference. These changes specifically are intended to make the committee more accessible and also clarify the role of the committee. I do want to make reference to those quickly and just note that the temporary and permanent disability definitions unfortunately got switched when I was copying the definitions over from a draft policy that I was working on. So that will be changed before it goes to Central Elgin Council. Other changes are specifically focused on clarifying when consultation with the Accessibility Committee is required, expanding the committee composition to allow parents and guardians of children with disabilities to apply, updating the staff support section, making it so if an individual has a permanent disability, then their accommodation plan will remain in place for the duration of the committee term and also allowing members to submit agenda items closer to the meeting date. If anyone has any questions about the changes, I am happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions? Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Annual Council Committee Update, County of Elgin and Central Elgin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, or JAAC 2022, dated January 4th, 2023, from the Accessibility Coordinator, be received and filed. And that Elgin County Council approved the recommended amendments to the County of Elgin and Central Elgin Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. And further, that these amendments to the Terms of Reference be made subject to the approval of the municipality of Central Elgin.
Thank you. Any, excuse me. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner will move, Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. 6.5 Director of Homes Senior Services Homes Administration Infection Prevention and Control Policy Updates. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Thank you. Through you to members of council, as the report on the Homes Administration Infection Prevention and Control Policy Updates. As you're aware, department policy and procedure manuals ensure consistency and quality in the services provided by the homes and they're reviewed annually and with legislative changes to ensure inclusion of best practice and alignment with current legislation. The Homes Manual for Administration and Infection Prevention and Control were reviewed by myself and the respective department managers. The C O approved the policies in draft to support compliance with ministry time timeframes. And the applicable policies have now been finalized and aligned with legislation. There's two administration policies in the report that were revised. And there's a large number of infection prevention and control policies in the report that were revised. The majority of those infection prevention and control policy revisions relate to basically catching policy up to, up to current practice and best practice. They're minor in nature. There are additions of resources and algorithms, updating and incorporating role changes and responsibilities. And there's a number of new policies that were developed to align with new legislative requirements from 2022. So the revised policy changes will be communicated to staff, residents, families, visitors, volunteers and contracted workers. As stated, there's a large number of changes in the IPAC manual. And again, it's a lot of catching up policy to current practice and best practice. So what we've decided to do for this module is a PowerPoint presentation was developed capturing the changes versus the staff having to go through every policy. So making it more manageable from a frontline staff perspective. And so that's been very well received by frontline staff as well. The two manual changes revisions align with the Fixing Long-Term Care Act and related regulations and best practices to support residents and staff safety as well as service delivery. The two recommendations before council are that the report be received and filed and that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Administration and Infection Prevention and Control manual updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care legislation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any questions for Michelle on these policy changes? It's a rather long list. Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Administration and Infection Prevention and Control Policy Updates, dated January 3rd, 2023, from the Director of Homes and Senior Services, be received and filed. And that council approve the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Administration and Infection Prevention and Control Policy Manual Updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long-Term Care legislation.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens will move, Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. 6.6 Director of Homes and Senior Services Homes Maintenance and Program and Therapy Section Six Policy Updates.
So this, the reports speak to one section of the program and therapy. Well, the entire maintenance policy manual. Again, the C O approved the policy to support. And the updates or revisions to each of those manuals is outlined. Again, only two changes for program and therapy, but a good number of changes for the maintenance policy manual. Again, updated to align with current legislative requirements, updated processes. A number of new policies to capture work that's being done as a practice to be done, but again, are legislative requirements. So that handles that updated prior to to align with legislation and again, the requirements. And again, education will set up on search. So the two recommendations for council are that the report will be filed and the council approved. The County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services.
Thank you for that report, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions on the maintenance policy changes? Seeing none, then I would call for the motion.
Be it resolved that the report titled Homes Maintenance and Program and Therapy Section Six Policy Updates dated January third, twenty twenty three, from the Director of Homes and Senior Services be received and filed. And that council approved the County of Elgin Homes and Senior Services Maintenance and Program and Therapy Section Six Policy Manual Updates to ensure alignment with current Ministry of Long Term Care Legislation.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor, yes, Sloan, that's right. And Counselor Jones? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Six, seven. General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise Deputy C O, approval of the official plan for the municipality of Central Elgin.
Morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. This report is intended to provide council with information with respect to recommendation of Central Elgin's approval of their official plan. Joining me is Mr. Hicks. He is currently the county's interim manager of planning or external planning consultant. He's joining me to address any technical questions that council may have. So upon receipt of Central Elgin's official plan received last August, staff under the guidance of Mr. Hicks and his team reviewed the submission, have identified as part of their review, five modifications which were presented to Central Elgin staff and accepted for inclusion in, in a revised document. The document is attached. The modifications are indicated in the staff report. Staff is recommending approval of the official plan. Has deemed it to be consistent with the provincial policy statement, conforms to the policies of the county official plan and represents good planning in the public interest. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this report? It was a long document to read. Yes, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think just a small typo. I think Malahide is described as being to the west of Central Elgin. And I was curious if Bill twenty three has any implications on this official plan and all official plans moving forward.
With your consent, Mr. Warden, I'll defer to Mr. Hicks for comment. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'm happy to field that question. And with respect to Bill twenty three, there's really one particular change and this was caught when we were when we were reviewing this official plan because the official plan was adopted and then Bill twenty three came into effect afterwards. This council may be familiar with some of the changes a lot in the, in the, in the province of Ontario, in this case in the County of Elgin. Be permitted to contain three residential dwellings on it. So that would be a primary, if we were looking at a single detached dwelling lot, that would be a primary residence that would include a apartment that could be incorporated into that residence and another apartment that could be incorporated into an accessory building such as a, an apartment above a garage. And so in this case, there is one modification out of the five that we are proposing that was identified by Central Elgin staff. And that was to address these, these new powers under the Planning Act that require, that require us to permit three residential units per, per per dwelling lot. So that's been incorporated in as a result of Bill twenty three. I think the only other thing that I would want to perhaps flag for county council, and this is outside the scope of Bill twenty three. But these were changes to the planning act. They're actually made back in twenty fifteen. County council may, may note that in this particular case, Central Elgin's official plan was, it was adopted in twenty thirteen and originally approved in twenty thirteen, around the same time actually that the county official plan was. Usually official plans have a twenty year life cycle associated with them. So this is, we're at the ten year cycle and we're replacing this official plan. And the reason that we're doing that is some additional changes that were enacted in twenty fifteen allow, once a, once a new official plan has been brought into place, it's not subject to review for another ten years. So as council may be aware, normally we go through five year review cycles. And in this case, approval of this official plan as a new official plan will allow the, the municipality of Central Elgin to defer their first review of their plan for, and for, for further ten years out, so in ten years from now. So there's, there's certainly some administrative efficiencies that come with this approach as well, too.
Thank you for that. Counselor Sloan?
Through you, Warden. Question on that last part on the ten years. Just Bill twenty three, there was some talk of how it could be done earlier. Is there anything that, that under Bill twenty three that would make it possible that it be done before ten years? Just a quick question or just a question?
Of course, through you, we're going to catch up. And there certainly wouldn't be anything that would prohibit a municipality from undertaking a review of their, their official plan prior to that ten year mark or even prior to a five year mark. A, a review can be undertaken at any time that, that a council or county council feels, sees fit to undertake that review. This just allows a local municipality to defer that to a ten year point if, if they so choose. Simply, and I would, I would suggest that particularly when we're in more complex urban environments that we may see like in the city of London, the GTA or Toronto, those five year review cycles can kind of pile up on top of each other. And so those provisions were really intended to give a little bit of breathing room in between official plan reviews for kind of lack of a better term. So it's kind of a long, long answer there, but it's, it's a, there's nothing that would prevent a, prevent a municipality from taking more frequent reviews if they so choose.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Paul. Any other questions? Julie?
Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin repeals the official plan of the municipality of Central Elgin as adopted by bylaw number fourteen twenty seven and all subsequently amendments, all subsequent amendments thereto. And that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin modifies and approves the official plan of the municipality of Central Elgin as adopted by bylaw twenty seven thirty two, as detailed in the attached decision. And that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the Planning Act.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan? Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Six, eight, Manager of, General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise Deputy C O, Centennial Road Elm Line Roundabout Construction Tender Award.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through to council. Just a very brief background. Our county commenced a and completed a municipal class environmental assessment back in twenty twenty as it relates to improvements to the intersection, subject intersection. BT Engineering assisted us with that study as well as the scope of work included detailed design preparation. That tender was completed last fall. Tender was released last fall as well. Tender results are before you. Staff are extremely pleased with the bid results to address perhaps anyone who may be wondering why the significant surplus as reported, the pre, sorry, the engineers pretender estimate was larger. And, and accordingly, our twenty twenty three budget identified the appropriate funds. What we found through the tender process was a very competitive bid submissions that were received. And so with that, staff is recommending award to LA Two Construction Limited and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Does anybody have any questions for Brian? Seeing none? Julie?
Be it resolved that LA Two Construction Limited be selected for the Centennial Road and Elm Line Roundabout Construction Project. Contract number twenty twenty two dash T zero seven at a total price of one million seven hundred and eighty four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety four cents. Exclusive of HST and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you. Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens will move. Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. Six, nine, General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise Deputy C O, the Wonderland Road Ron McNeil Line Ford Road and Highway Three Environmental Assessment and Preliminary Design Study Draft Project File. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through you to council. This report details a significant amount of effort undertaken with respect to the preparation of a municipal class of my environmental assessment that meets the county's municipal environment assessment requirements undertaken in partnership with MTO. Accordingly, costs to date have been shared. And in turn, the EA process also satisfies the provincial environmental assessment approval process. Joining me today is Andrea Klieg, representative and, and lead study lead for, from GHD for the study. She will be providing a brief presentation here momentarily detailing the various alternatives that were reviewed as through the study. And, and detailing the preferred alternative that is ultimately before you for which staff is seeking council's endorsement of necessarily, necessary to finalize the study and make it available to the public for a thirty day public review period. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Thank you, Brian. Good morning, everyone. So I'll, I'll just instruct you to, to move the slides. Apologies in advance. I'm going to speak a little quickly, but there's some important stuff I'd like to get through to share with you. So thank you for having me. So we'll go to the next slide and we'll jump right in. So we're here today to present the results of the preliminary design of the EA as mentioned for Wonderland Road and Ron McNeil Line connection with Highway Three. Brian did the whole presentation here. We're in partnership with MTO to get this done. And we went through the class EA process to get the PFR. So you should have the PFR, the project file report. Or you can reference it if you have any further questions in regards to that. So let's move on to the next slide and get right in here. So we want to take us back to why this project was initiated in the first place. And this slide presents the study area and the surrounding communities. So you see Wonderland Road running north, south from London towards the St. Thomas and Talbotville and Hurst areas. And MTO constructed the interchange there at Highway four oh one in two thousand and fifteen, which connects those communities. You can see Highway three kind of on the south of the page, Talbotville and connecting into St. Thomas. And then the CN rail line in bold red, you can see that that has a big impact to our studies. So we're highlighting that in red. And Ron McNeil line, you can see heading east, west into the study area there. And Wonderland Road is now a desirable alternative route as opposed to Wellington coming from south of London into the communities. So. So let's move to the next slide. And this is the study area. So we're zooming in here and it presents the study area. So you can see Wonderland Road is mostly north, south, and then it comes into the study area and that ninety degree curve, I'm sure everyone knows about that curve. It's, it's a good one. And then it continues to curve again to connect to Ron McNeil Line. So traffic coming from Wonderland to meet Highway three has to navigate a couple of those pretty, pretty significant curves and then head south on Ron McNeil Line to hit Highway three. So it's a little bit messy. And as Wonderland Road, sorry, I go scroll through my notes here. Ron McNeil Line is predominantly east, west, and then curves to the south here to meet Highway three. And it is known that Wonderland Road used to continue directly south. You can see a little bit of a shadow there where it used to continue right south to Highway three. But at the time of the previous study, the traffic on Ron McNeil Line was predominant over the traffic on Wonderland Road. So our study started with a traffic analysis to determine if improvements are required or justified for the local road improvements. And the traffic study found that traffic on Wonderland Road increased significantly since the construction of the bridge. And with this increase, the ownership and management of Wonderland Road was changed from the township of Southwood to Elving County. And Wonderland Road was recently improved just to the north of this study area. And it now should be treated as the primary road with Ron McNeil Line as the secondary road. A collision review was completed and found that there were no discerning collision patterns. And the number and severity would be considered below average for the study area. And we also want to point out that the intersection of Highway three, Ron McNeil Line, Ford Road, it's enough, both is currently stock controlled at the apex of the Highway three curve. And it was found that this intersection warrants a traffic signal control change, which could be signals or roundabout. And it's warranted today and delays, delays will start to increase over time. So we'll go to the next slide. So the first thing we wanted to figure out is what are our desired outcomes? So based on the traffic study, we came up with a few desired outcomes. And first and foremost, Wonderland Road should be a direct connection to Highway three. We want to remove the sharp horizontal curves and reduce the turning movements for the traffic going from Wonderland to Highway three. So planning for traffic and a trust and a traffic control change at the intersection so that, again, that could be signals or roundabout. We want to connect Ron McNeil Line as a lower priority road and we want to connect it to Wonderland Road. We need to correct Ford Road for flow through green light conditions and we'll touch on that as well in a moment. We want efficient connections between Highway three and Wonderland Road, between Highway three and Ford Road and between Ron McNeil Line and Wonderland Road. We want to maximize the use of the existing road platform. And we want minimal, preferably no impacts to the CN rail line, the municipal drain, the woodlots and private property. And of course, last but not least, we want a cost effective solution. And moving to the next slide. So as we move, so now we know our desired outcomes. So now we need to understand the controlling factors and the challenges. And as you, as you've heard, there are a few in this area. So I presented some of the obvious ones here, not being the bright blue line is the municipal drain. And then you can see the woodlots in the aerial image. There's a hydro line. It's not a transmission line, but it's just a wonky alignment through the study area. So we're keeping that in mind. Of course, the CN rail line is just west of the study area and we know it needs to be maintained. Therefore, we need the right separation between the rail, the rail line and the intersection. The existing intersection is on a curve on Highway three, which really should be avoided in design. And Ford Road is currently stock conditioned from the south at Highway three. And when it was originally designed, it was kept on tangent to the intersection and then connected to Highway three with an improper curve. If traffic signals are to be installed, the connection needs to be improved for the flow through green light conditions. And there are horizontal curves on existing Wonderland Road and there are safety concern we want to address. And we need to account for separation between Highway three, Ron McNeil intersections. And on top of everything else, to keep it interesting, there is a plan to build and construct the St. Thomas bypass. And you can see the right away kind of curving up there from Highway three towards the woodlot and that's the right away that is currently designated for the bypass. And we'll move on to the next slide. Thank you. So the development of the alternative started in three steps. So there's a bunch of stuff going on around here. So the first thing we wanted to think about is the extension of Wonderland Road to Highway three. And the connection of Ron McNeil Line to Wonderland and then the intersection control change. So what do we want to do at the intersection? For, for that alternative. So we selected feasible alternative alignments for the Wonderland Road extension. We selected a feasible connection of Ron McNeil Line to Wonderland. And then we developed intersection alternatives. So since we quickly determined that Wonderland Road cannot connect to Highway three west of the existing intersection, either the CN tracks. We created three general alignments and you'll see those in a moment. And since the connection of Ron McNeil Line to Wonderland was reduced to one alternative based on property impacts and the use of the existing platform, we only had, we're only presenting one of those throughout. That was a simpler solution to find. So I'm going to try to whiz through. There's four alternatives here. Three of them are traffic signals and the last one, I think you'll be happy to see is a roundabout. So it will flip through alternative one. So if you're forward to the next slide. Perfect. Thank you. So again, traffic signal, you'll see here, it's basically the same location as the intersection today. And we've got curves going on Wonderland, also on Ford Road to improve that for green light conditions. All of these meet or exceed tax standards. But you'll see the key impacts here are the extension of the, of the culvert. We have to extend that municipal drain culvert that's currently under Highway Three. So now it's going to be a pretty long culvert under there and impacts to the drain. There's wood, woodlot impacts. You'll see it Ford Road. And the estimated property acquisition here is about seventeen hectares and that impacts five property owners. Moving to alternative two. So this one, it doesn't appear to be all that different, but our goal here was to reduce the impacts to the woodlot. It also reduces impacts to the drain. So instead, we're putting a new culvert just a little further north of the existing culvert. We have less impacts to Ford Road. This one's moved about twenty-five meters from the existing intersection. The skew here is about nineteen degrees, which is pretty close to the maximum desirable skew for an intersection. And so those are the key impacts. Generally, the property here is twelve hectares of impacts. And that's for property owners that would be impacted by that. Next one, again, traffic signals. We went even further to the west, sorry, to the east. And that's about seventy-five meters east. Now the skew here is twenty degrees. So that is our maximum skew, a maximum desirable skew. Again, we have a new culvert here, really no impacts to the woodlot. Property is about fifteen hectares and that's six property owners. So before I go on to the next one, I just want to briefly mention here when we're doing a traffic signal, super elevation comes into play. There's all kinds of curves here, Highway Three, Ford Road, Wonderland Road. There's a lot of curves going on. So when we're intersecting all of those, a super elevation, it becomes very complicated. And while it's achievable, we are at the lower end of acceptable geometrics when we're, when we're doing the intersection at this, at this location. So we'll go to the alternative four is the last alternative we're presenting, and it's a roundabout. And when we talk to the geometrics, just mentioned super elevation, all that fun stuff, this really addresses all of that. And so it really is geometrically preferred. Again, we have a new culvert. It's not an extension of a culvert. So, so that's a positive. We have no impacts to the woodlot. And, you know, fixing Ford Road is less of an issue here because everyone needs to slow down when you enter a roundabout. And like I said, the geometrics are better in this placement. And the estimate of property acquisition is only about point three hectares and that impacts four property owners. You know, the roundabout offers significant benefits, like I said, in many factors, you've seen property entrance impacts, reduced impacts to the woodlot, the municipal drain, better geometrics. And from what we've heard, the county would like to see a roundabout as a nice gateway into the community. So moving on to the next slide. So I don't want to dwell on this too long, but some of the, some of the key comparative elements, we went through the process to compare everything. For traffic operations, the roundabout technically loses because priority is not given to Highway Three in this instance. When you have a traffic signal, Highway Three will have majority of flow-through traffic. So the roundabout, everyone always needs to slow down. So I know the roundabout's great, but it loses in this, in this regard. Property, the roundabout wins. Constructibility, the roundabout is a little more difficult to construct. The alignment skew and geometrics, the roundabout tops them all. Municipal drain impacts. Alternative one is not so good, but the rest really compares similarly. With woodlot impacts, the roundabout again is the winner with alternative two also as a winner. And then the cost, the roundabout is the least expensive with alternative two next. But really, they're not all that different. So cost wasn't, wasn't a huge factor when comparing these. And next slide, I wanted to touch briefly on the consultation that took place. And so we sent out three public notices. The final notice will be the study of completion and that will be the fourth and like I said, the last one. We received twelve comments in response to the notice of study commencement, seven comments in response to the online PIC, and one comment just for clarification in response to the notice of project shutdown. Some of the comments were about farm vehicles navigating around about visibility in the curve at Wonderland, drainage in the Auckland Drain, noise impacts, and my favorite, support and a preference for the roundabout alternative. And next slide. So yeah, so going through the alternative evaluation, the consultation, the roundabout was selected as a technically preferred design for this location. So this picture presents, again, the roundabout alternative, but it also shows the property impact. So you see in the red there, they're very small areas. Just a little bit in each and there's four little areas for property acquisition and the construction cost estimate is five point three. And that's it. That's the end of my presentation. So I'm happy to accept any questions that you have.
Thank you, Andrea. Brian, I believe you have some closing comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want a, a couple of things. Number one, I want to highlight within the communications requirement of staff report accidentally indicated municipality of Bayham. Meant to say the township of Southold. Secondly, as indicated by Andrea, the engineer's estimate for this project is about five point three million dollars. Based on discussions with MTO staff, it's, it's, it's contemplated at the present time that, or it's there. It's their contemplation that costs associated with construction would be shared. It's also important to note that MTO has also indicated and Andrea alluded to the development of St. Thomas Expressway within this vicinity. As a result of significant growth and development such as Amazon and area development, MTO is actually looking to expedite development of the St. Thomas Expressway within this general area at some point within the next five to ten years. So accordingly, in terms of their desired commencement of the roundabout, they are, as I was advised last week, beginning to prepare their RFP to retain a consult to begin detailed design of this roundabout within the next twelve months, subject to their budget approval. And believes that shovels could be in the ground within the next two years. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to probably Andrea. The first statement, this has been a long time coming. We're extremely happy that this is moving forward finally. Although slow, still a slow process, but Andrea, in the bottom paragraph of your summary, discusses EA approvals and in concert with future development of plans of subdivision. Can you explain that statement?
Oh, with subdivisions. That's a great question. I'm actually not fully aware of all of the subdivisions that are going to be going in there. So this may actually be better for you, Brian.
Yeah, through Mr. Warren to Counselor Jones. Staff both at the county and MTO are well aware of proposed developments within the vicinity such as the ones within your municipality along McBane. Discussions remain ongoing with those prospective developers in an effort to move those files along. Those developers have been advised of plans in this regard and so any sort of discussion in that regard is, is what's being alluded to here.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. This question to Brian now. Is this project going to be an MTO-led project? And what will our role be in the overall completion of the project?
Through you, Mr. Warren, to Counselor McPhail. It absolutely will be an MTO-led project. County's involvement would merely be provision of comments and, and participation potentially at construction site meetings. Given the, given the minimal influence we have with respect to Wonderland Road. At the present time, township staff would likely also be involved as it relates to realigned, required realignments on Ford Road. So from, from an involvement standpoint, both representatives from both organizations, township and county would be involved. MTO would take the lead on detailed design and construction and contract administration. And we, at the time of construction, would likely be in attendance to receive updates and provide any further instruction.
Yes, Mr. Warden, this is a supplementary. You had mentioned shared cost. Any idea of what that's going to look like? And do we have any ability to negotiate those shared costs? Or is this just going to be put on our desk here and say this is the way it is? Get over it?
Yeah, so at the present time, as, as mentioned, discussions at a very high level between county staff and MTO staff have indicated that MTO staff's expectation would be that the county would fund upwards or share in the cost of construction. No formal commitment has certainly been made. That will be a decision of council. The costs in terms of detailed design are unknown at this point in time until, you know, the RFP proposals are received. You know, I think as everybody can appreciate, MTO has very robust, significant standards, design standards as compared to municipalities and counties. And so, you know, this, as shown here today, is, is an expensive roundabout compared to the one that council just awarded earlier today. So.
Counselor Jones?
Just to further the comment. So St. Thomas is going ahead with future plans as well. And it sounds like this is going, their plans are going to be incorporated into this roundabout. Is that my understanding or a possibility of it?
So discussions with St. Thomas were minimal to the extent that they simply provided comments through the public consultation process. There was, there's no planned design features for which the city has requested that will, at this point in time, will be incorporated in this design. It'll be a predominantly, it is a county MTO partnership in that regard.
Anything further? Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Andrea. I drive through that messy significant curve quite often. And I don't understand how a roundabout will reduce the curve and make it safer.
Yeah, so the, the curve will actually disappear for Wonderland traffic. And so what we're doing is we're extending Wonderland and not have, so that curve is going to be actually a stock-controlled intersection. It'll become Ron McNeil Line. Ron McNeil Line will extend. So the name, you know, that turn will no longer be Wonderland. So Wonderland's going to go straight through. I mean, straight, you know, used loosely because there will be some curves to hit Highway Three. So that, that curve will be removed. It will be stock-controlled for traffic coming Wonderland, sorry, coming on Ron McNeil Line. And then they'll turn on to Wonderland. Wonderland's going to continue all the way to Highway Three. So it's less about the roundabout and more about the extension of Wonderland Road that's going to get rid of that curve.
Go ahead, Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I'm talking about the curves on number three highway. They're significant, not the curve on Wonderland. I, I, yeah.
Sorry for missing your staying there. So yeah, Highway Three. So, yeah, so Highway Three, it's still going to be, going to be the same general curve, but having a roundabout there. All traffic is forced to slow down at the roundabout. So like I said, while, while maybe not so desirable for the Highway Three traffic, but it's safer because everyone is forced to slow down with the entrance into the, into the roundabout. Hopefully that made a little bit, a little bit more sense. Not sure I see nodding.
Counselor Sloan?
Through you, Warden, to Brian and my council colleagues. One of the, some of the feedback as a newer person to these type of discussions always discusses how the agricultural community is affected by a roundabout with respect to their tractors, et cetera. I just thought I would ask if that's something that's been contemplated. Thank you.
Yes, certainly. As Andrea indicated, we did receive those comments from the agricultural community through the public consultation process. The roundabout, similar to the one that was awarded today by council at Centennial Elm, does provide sufficient platform width to accommodate large agricultural equipment that may also, may also be towed. So we are, we are, we are pleased with the preliminary design put forth by GHD and feel that it will function appropriately. And in the same way, MTO staff, technical staff, were certainly intimately familiar with the requirements for this area as well in that regard.
Counselor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just in regards to that agricultural friendly roundabout, will the curves be rollover curves or they're smooth instead of the square curves? Because there are a lot of roundabouts aren't friendly.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. MTO staff referenced some of their most recent installations up near Ingersoll. As, as the most recent examples of their MTO roundabout designs, which in those, in those instances do incorporate rollover curves as opposed to barrier curves.
Thank you.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The roundabout idea, is that the best idea in an area like that with heavy rain and snow removal? And does that make a bypass that's ideally to keep traffic moving at a decent rate? Does that make it? I, I find it hard to believe that a roundabout in a spot like that would be safe in the winter time.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warren, to Counselor Noble. Certainly, MTO staff combed through the recommendation put forth by GHD with, with significant, with significant detail and felt themselves that the roundabout was the appropriate solution for this application. As, as councils likely aware, this, this Highway Three falls under their jurisdiction with respect to maintenance and, and even their maintenance staff, staff felt that they could appropriately maintain this roundabout as they do in other jurisdictions, other locations.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. With the roundabout down at the bottom of the hill outside of St. Thomas, although it isn't the city of St. Thomas, township Southold maintains that during the winter and now we don't have a race car driver driving that road. We don't have any problems. Before he kept going around circles and never could figure out how to get off of it. But no, our staff have no problem with it at all.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, good discussion. Julie?
Be it resolved that the report titled Wonderland Road, Ron McNeil Line, Ford Road, and Highway Three Environmental Assessment and Preliminary Design Study Draft Project File from the General Manager of Engineering Planning and Enterprise and Deputy CAO dated January third, 2023, be received and filed and further that council endorse the Wonderland Road, Ron McNeil Line, Ford Road, and Highway Three Environmental Assessment and Preliminary Design Study Draft Project File for finalization.
Mover and seconder please. Counselor Jones will move. Counselor McPhail will second. All in favor? Any opposed? It's carried. Okay, it is ten-ten. Let's take a short break. Recharge your coffee cups. What do you need? Ten minutes? Okay. Six-ten. From the CAO, County Council Strategic Plan and Corporate Action Plan Update Report. Julie?
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through you to members of council. This report is intended to give council some sense of ongoing projects and initiatives as well as an overview of the strategic plan. Our hope is that it will spark a continuous dialogue about the strategic plan and our strategic commitments. We do hope to develop a new format moving forward, which would involve a scorecard, a corporate scorecard that would involve strategic initiatives and our staff action plan in one really easy and comprehensive document, easy to understand, comprehensive document. So part of this report also recommends that council meet sometime in the coming months to do a refresh on the 2020 to 2022 strategic plan, which was adopted in November of twen, no, January, February. Twenty, no, January, February of two thousand and twenty. So that would hold you through until fall when you could undertake a more comprehensive strategic planning process. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Julie, for that. Any questions? Yes, Counsel Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Not so much a question, but a comment. I would really endorse just a slightly different format so that. For the operational plan update so that it's not obviously for us to get in the weeds, but in terms of our responsibility of like risk management and knowing what's on track. Because we can see now there's a lot in progress. But in the current format, it doesn't tell us it's in progress, but is it being delayed? Is it is it on track? What is the target date? So I really I'm glad to hear that we're heading in that direction. It'll be useful.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Counsel Sloan?
Just along those lines. Thank you. They talk about a balanced scorecard. Is that something that's used in a strategic plan? And I and I throw that out there, not exactly knowing what that means.
Through you, Mr. Warren, to Counsel Sloan. Generally, a balanced scorecard is how you would report on a plan. So you if council developed a strategic plan, then a balanced scorecard would follow. And so that's how you track progress against the plan. That's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Can Julie the motion?
Be it resolved that the report titled Council Strategic Plan and Corporate Action Plan Update dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three from the Chief Administrative Officer be received and filed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counsel Noble and Counsel Sloan will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six eleven, Chief Administrative Officer, Alternative Work Arrangement Bank Time Policy. Julie?
Thanks, Mr. Warren. Through you to members of council. At its meeting on December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, County Council. Approved two new human resources policies, overtime and lieu policy two point one two and on call standby and call in policy. Number two point one nine. The purpose of this report is to seek council's approval for a new alternative work arrangement and bank time policy to replace two point one zero. Which was hours of worked and alternative work arrangement, policy two point one zero. And this would be for implementation effective January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. So approval of this policy will ensure consistent application across all departments. And the new policy gives consideration to a number of provisions which are reported on page two of the report. And to circle back to a suggestion from Counselor Sloan that is included that bank time cannot be used when staff are required to be present at a council meeting. So with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions, Council may have.
Thank you for report, Julie. Any questions for Julie on this report? Is seen none?
Be it resolved that the report titled Alternative Work Arrangement Bank Time Policy two point one zero from the Chief Administrative Officer dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three be received and filed for information. And that the hours of work and alternative work arrangement policy two point one zero be replaced with alternative work arrangement and banked time policy two point one zero and further. That the alternative work arrangement and bank time policy two point one zero be approved for implementation effective January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Mover and seconder? Counsel Sloan and Counsel Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Six point one two, the Chief Administrative Officer Committee Bylaw twenty-three zero one.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. Bylaw nineteen dash forty, as amended by bylaw twenty twenty, was established in two thousand and nineteen to define the mandate. And meeting procedures for committees established by the County of Elgin. This report proposes a number of changes to bylaw nineteen forty, which are included within the report. And the report is pretty comprehensive and the track changes are included within the appended committee bylaw. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions to to clarify what's in the report.
Thank you for that report. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Counsel Joan?
Just just thank you, Warden. Just to comment, I'm surprised it's been this long since we actually looked at the bylaw. Long overdue.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, Julie?
Be it resolved that the. That the report titled Committee Bylaw twenty-three dash zero one from the Chief Administrative Officer dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three be received and filed. And that bylaw twenty-three dash zero one being a bylaw to define the mandate and meeting procedures for committees established by the Corporation of the County of Elgin. And to repeal bylaw nineteen dash forty and bylaw twenty dash twenty be approved for enactment as presented.
Mover and seconder, please. Counsel Jones will move. Counsel Crockett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six point three one three, Chief Administrative Officer, Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario, Inc., Community Paramedicine Agreement. Julie?
Thanks, Mr. Warren. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to inform council that consensus has been reached with Medevy. EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated as to the terms and conditions of a community paramedicine agreement. So this report seeks council's approval of the proposed agreement, which is appended to the report. And just generally speaking, this is a really great program for our community and we're. Really excited that we finally reached this important milestone, which is to have both a lease present to council and a service agreement. So. The background and details of the agreement are summarized in the report and the the agreement is appended to the report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you for a report. Any questions? Counsel McFail?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Julie. Is there any? Or how does it work that we are able to track the success of the program?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to Counsel McFail. So we are required to report. A lot of metrics back to the ministry who's fully funding this program. So that's one way of tracking success is ensuring that the metrics are collected in the first place. Reported back to the ministry will also use those metrics to report back to council. It will be difficult to assess performance. Right out of the gate. So typically with these types of programs, you need to establish a benchmark, whether it's six months or one year. In order to be able to evaluate the success of the program. So we will hopefully be able to bring a progress report back to council within six months of starting the program. So council can help understand what metrics are you looking for in order. For council to measure the success of this program. So to be determined. And I know I've provided a lot of information there, but we don't.
Certainly, from our perspective of. Sitting on council here to to have information when questioned by the public that you have factual information. Just one supplementary question, Mr. Warden. When it comes to our our commitments to neighboring. Municipalities, so our ambulance coverage between Elgin and Middlesex and and Elgin and Oxford and Elgin and John Kent. Does this go program go across those borders too, or is this solely just Elgin?
Through you, Mr. Warren, Counsel McFail. This is dedicated to Elgin-St. Thomas. So we we experienced this during the pandemic where we were without a community paramedicine program. At a time when some of our neighbors had these programs and so it doesn't work the same as borderless ambulance services. And we learned that through the pandemic.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Be it resolved that the Within Report to Council dated January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Entitled Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated Community Paramedicine Agreement be received and filed. And that Elgin County Council approve a new community paramedicine agreement between Elgin County and Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario substantially in the form attached. To the report as appendix A. And that Elgin County Council authorize the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer to execute the said agreement on behalf of the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Mover and seconder, please. Counsel McFail will move. Counsel Hens will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six point one four, Chief Administrative Officer, Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario, Inc., Approval of Commercial Lease, Elgin County Administrative Building, Suite one five three.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of council. The purpose of this report is to again inform council that consensus has been reached between or with Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated. As to the terms and conditions of a new commercial lease for suite one fifty-three within the Elgin County Administration Building. And thereafter to seek approval for authorization for execution of this formal lease to give effect terms and conditions that are detailed within the report and as attached within the appended agreement. So Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario or Medevy will be a commercial tenant within this building. For the purpose related to delivering community paramedicine within the community. So the core elements are detailed within the report and the agreement itself is largely in conformance with the standard lease agreement that has been presented to council. In regard to other tenants within the county admin building. Two variations from the standard lease are that the term is relatively short. And the landlord is responsible for the cost of leasehold improvements. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that report. Is there any questions? Julie?
Be it resolved that the Within Report to Council dated January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three entitled Medevy EMS Elgin, Ontario Incorporated Approval of Commercial Lease. Elgin Administration, Elgin County Administration Building, Suite one five three be received and filed. And that Elgin County Council approve a new commercial lease agreement between Elgin County, Medevy EMS, Elgin, Ontario. For suite one five three at four hundred and fifty Sunset Drive. St. Thomas for an initial term commencing retroactively to January first, two thousand and twenty-three and ending on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Substantially in the form of appendix A to the report to council. And that Elgin County Council authorize the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer to execute the said lease agreement on behalf of the Corporation of the County of Elgin.
Mover and seconder, please. Counsel Noble will move. Counsel Sloan will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Which brings us to the fun part. Six point one five, the two thousand and twenty-three budget deliberations presentation. Just to remind council, this is our first pass through the budget and I expect there's going to be a lot of information. And it's going to be a long presentation. So hold on. We'll be taking several breaks throughout the process. And who's leaving off? Julie, do you have preliminary comments? All right.
Thanks, Mr. Warren. Through you to members of council. We recognize that municipal budgeting can be daunting. And it can be a daunting undertaking. So while many people don't think of a municipality as a business, it definitely is. We have. Revenue coming in, we have expenses going out. And today we have approximately a ninety ninety-two point five million dollar budget to consider. So we are just like any other corporation. We have endeavored to take some complicated financial items, budget items, initiatives and approaches and simplify them. So if you have any questions or if we've perhaps oversimplified any concepts, do let us know and we're happy to to respond. So the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-three focuses on maintaining services. While advancing infrastructure sustainability and addressing our legislated service requirements. Today, council will receive the two thousand and twenty-three budget as prepared only by staff at this point and relying on direction from previous council and budget committee. So the total budget includes nine point two five million dollars of which sixty-nine point six million is operating. And this is proposed to maintain county programs and services through another year of post pandemic inflationary pressures. The consolidated base budget proposes an increase of three point six percent, which is compared to the current year-over-year CPI. Increase of six point five to six point nine percent. So while right rising costs for supplies, fuel and insurance have impacted the draft budget. It does maintain a focus on the county's key priorities, including investing in. In transportation infrastructure for the county's growing communities and responding to Ontario's Fixing Long Term Care Act. At Elgin's three long-term care homes as well as service changes in another. In in a few other departments. And those are detailed within our presentation. So we have worked over the past several months to bring forward what I would say is a responsible budget. And one that will continue to incrementally propel Elgin forward and modernize our services. While working to mitigate rising costs that we're experiencing in almost every one of our service areas. Each year we follow a similar process when it comes to the overall planning of the county's budget. That said, with a new council, a new term of council, we are interested in hearing. Your ideas of ways that we can change the format so that it best suits your needs. As well, we're interested in hearing your ideas about how to best engage the community. In our process to ensure that this budget that we're developing. Supports council's direction and supports the community's need for understanding. How their money is being spent on county services. So the recommendation today is is pretty generic. It's that council feedback that we receive as we make our way through the draft today. Be received as staff direction to make amendments to the draft budget for presentation at a future meeting. Scheduling meetings for counselors is important and I think we did establish some tentative dates at least that align with your council meetings. But identifying a schedule for council's budget deliberations that the community can follow is equally as important. So as previously discussed, we will post the budget meeting dates. What one change is the final budget approval is a moving target at this point and we may have a better sense after. Today's meeting and the second budget meeting. But hope to be able to to post kind of when we're targeting. On our website so that our residents can follow along. So our meetings are open and available to anyone who wants to attend in person and available electronically for those who want to tune in. We'll also be using social media to engage our community in the budget process. So to walk you through very briefly our process to date. And making connections back to the strategic plan in terms of serving Elgin and engaging our with our community and other stakeholders. The two thousand and twenty-three budget survey was reviewed by the Budget Committee in July of two thousand and twenty-three. We did publish the survey and distributed it in public locations, including each of our ten library branches between the months of July and September. And those results were presented to the Budget Committee in November of two thousand and twenty-two. We are in terms of engaging with our community, we are proposing a public input period following meeting two, if that works out. Investing in Elgin, so delivering mandated programs and services efficiently and effectively. We used the survey results to inform our departmental budgets and that work has been ongoing from September until last night. And will be ongoing moving forward. The executive leadership. The executive leadership team worked collaboratively to identify risks and opportunities and developed a list that was presented to the Budget Committee in November. We have ongoing interdepartmental collaboration, which is happening between, which is led by executive leadership team members. And the finance team has worked very hard to compile departmental budgets and identify variances. So I'd like to to thank our dedicated finance team for their tireless work in that regard. Council's two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two strategic plan outlines the county's direction for strengthening our capacity and our impact on the public. Ongoing projects reflect the county's three strategic pillars, serving Elgin, growing Elgin and investing in Elgin. An important part of municipal budgeting is consideration of mandatory and discretionary services. So mandatory services are those that are required by the Long Term Care Home Act or the Fixing Long Term Care Home Act and the Municipal Act, which specifies or requires that we provide ambulance services, social services, long-term care, public health and discretionary services are services that have been established in response to community need. And are areas where council can exercise more discretion with respect to how you deliver the service and the level to which you fund that service. It is important to note that most discretionary services originated out of a strong community need. And as a result, the residents who benefit from those services would likely consider them to be essential. So we have to be careful as we make any changes even to discretionary service areas. So at this time, I'll turn things over to Jennifer Ford, our Director of Financial Services, to provide a brief budget overview.
Thank you, Julie. Through you, Mr. Warden, to council. The comparative data provided on this slide, on the next slide, fluctuates from year to year and covers temp and covers temporarily is covered temporarily by reserves when available sources of funding are not available like taxes. And then we would offset some of that with debt if necessary. Council must often reconsider to move forward or defer capital or operating items to minimize the need for debt and determine the final levy increase. Debt of twelve million was issued to the county in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-seven million is pre-approved for the Terrace Lodge redevelopment project to ensure project completion at this time. And this is the comparative data from two thousand and twenty-two back to two thousand and eighteen. Next slide. As mentioned, executive leadership team identified risks and opportunities during the process that were common across most service areas. Inflation was identified as the premier risk. The October CPI was six point five percent, which is what some of our current contracts are based on each year. Recruitment and retention is a risk that is felt across the corporation and predominantly is a concern in the area of long-term care. Technology and software is identified as both a risk and an opportunity. The cyber incident identified a need for cloud-based applications to enhance security protocols that reduce risk while improving accessibility and efficiency combined with increased functionality. The major risk to cloud-based modernization is that it tends to be more costly. The next slide outlines the projections made by E L T as mentioned at the onset of the budget process. And I recognize the numbers are a little difficult to see on screen, but these this information was included in your council package and will be further discussed by the departmental presentation slides. The tenure plan is a tool that the county uses to provide a preliminary roadmap of anticipated future needs. Current year needs are included and projected to outline the impacts of decisions on the future. Throughout the tenure plan, we have used the historical rate of two percent as a placeholder for inflation. This is adjusted in year as needed to reflect the current year needs. This plan was last reviewed in February, two thousand and twenty-two by council. Next slide. It is important to note that the tenure plan provides a guide for departments. And that each year, the plans are updated to reflect annually new and ever-changing information. It is also important to note that this plan is for information purposes only and is only accepted by council in principle. Budget methodology. Municipalities are only permitted to take on long-term debt to pay for capital projects and are required to fully fund their net income plan by the end of each fiscal year. The County of Elgin uses a zero-based approach to develop its budget by compiling needs into a holistic net income number. Net income contains all the necessary revenue to accommodate debt repayment and operational and capital budget needs. Net income does not include capital expenses. And as a result, the county's net income budget usually appears to be in a surplus position. But as we will show later, the surplus is fully utilized and is not in excess of what we need. Amortization is included in the net income number and represents a non-cash expense item funded through operations that is used for capital expenses. The Ontario Community Infrastructure and the Canada Community Building Fund, formerly named the Federal Gas Tax, are flowed through the net income to the capital plan. Other sources of funding are also flowed through the net income number.
Now turn this over to Julie. So so what you can expect to to hear today is different for each department. So within each of our budgets and service areas, you'll see that some projects and initiatives have been previously endorsed by council. Some are new service initiatives or enhancement. Others are, and this impacts most departments, but inflationary impacts of those driven by market forces. This includes inflationary year-over-year invest adjustments for cost of living, which we'll refer to as COLA. And you'll see that on many of our slides, C O L A. Salaries, benefits, insurance, fuel, overhead, those are inflationary impacts. Service level impacts can be both positive and negative dollar values, and it doesn't necessarily always mean a change in service. Service level impacts can be internal and external changes that result in an adjustment or a change in from the financial perspective. So so an example of that would be costs borne out of the acquisition of new capital assets. So as part of your orientation, you learned about the front burner issues or key challenges that we are facing. These are covered within our departmental presentations, but you can see the list is long and we thought it was important to provide this list to the public as well. So each department has prepared a presentation detailing their service area and associated budget. Some information, including introductions and service overview, was provided previously to council as part of your orientation. So we've included it for the public, but intend to either skip it or cover it really quickly today. So I encourage you to jump in if you have any questions about the services that we are providing. As well, I'd like to point out that a binder has been provided to each member of council. And there are two tabs. Tab A includes a printout of the financial information that will be presented on the on the big slide. So that if it is difficult to see, we can say, refer to tab A, page thirty. And you can see it more clearly in front of you. As well, tab B includes the printouts that were of the tenure plan that were included in your council agenda package. Again, just so that we can walk you through it more easily than we can on on the screens within the council chambers. So don't hesitate to let us know if you are struggling to see the information that is presented on the screens. So in November, we presented the results of the budget survey to the Budget Committee. And we had three hundred and ninety-four submissions. Hundred and forty of those submissions were from Central Elgin. Fifty-one from Malahide, forty-three from Southold, forty-two from West Elgin, thirty-six from Bayham, seventeen from Elmer. And I'm missing Denton Dunwich. But we had, I think, around thirty responses from Denton Dunwich. Seventeen responses were from outside of Elgin. And it's important to note, since we'll be referring to the budget survey throughout our presentations, that the results of the budget survey are not statistically valid. And this is because of the low response rate and also because of the methods by which we collected the information. They do, however, act as an important gauge into our community's objectives for the two thousand and twenty-three budgets, which is why we have a slide dedicated to to how each department took into consideration the survey results. So the Budget Committee recommended in November that each service answer area answer a series of questions. And these questions form part of our presentations. And it's our hope that they will help the public and council see how we're considering budget survey information, how we're considering internal and external pressures like inflation, along with ensuring alignment with corporate plans, like a service delivery review, council strategic plan and other departmental plans that are already in place. So the the six questions that are included on the slide that is before you will all will be addressed within each departmental presentation. So we just had a break. I had built in automatic breaks, not knowing just as a reminder, because once you get crunching numbers, you can forget about taking necessary breaks. So we can skip this one. Okay, so with that, I'd like to introduce our Director of Community and Cultural Services, Brian Michelli, who will take it from here.
All right, yeah, thank you, Julie, and through you and Mr. Warden to council and Happy New Year. And I look forward to working with you in in the in this term in the upcoming year. Again, my name is Brian Michelli, Director of Community and Cultural Services, and our department encompasses the Elgin County Library System, which is comprised of ten branches. The Elgin County Museum, which also operates the Heritage Center and the Elgin County Archives. To move to our two thousand and twenty-three challenges, I would just like to highlight one, and I know Counselor Cookett, you know, this has been a longstanding issue, but continuing to make make the needs of the Elmer Library and the space challenges we have there to continue to advocate for for increasing space relative to the population we're serving. And we look forward to working with the town, hopefully to come to some sort of a plan to move forward on that. As far as our opportunities, we are looking forward to the completion of the elevator project in this building and some service alignment that could occur as a result of that between museum and archive. So as you can see, I think, see today, there's a big crane up front. Great progress is being made and we look forward to the completion of that project. Moving to the questions from the Budget Committee, the first one being, how did your department take into consideration the survey results? Our department did take this on as a challenge and so concerted effort was made to solicit responses. And I think this explains the marked increase that we received in two thousand and twenty-two, the three hundred and ninety-four over the two hundred and twenty-one received in two thousand and twenty-one. And the majority of respondents in that survey indicated that they would like seventy-five percent to see in that current investments maintained or increased relative to our service services. Like to stress that our department's proposed budget maintains these current investments while integrating efficiencies to result in a zero percent increase to all discretionary discretionary lines of our operating budget. How did our department take into consideration the survey results? There were several comments made relative to duplication of services and wanting to eliminate duplication of services. And I know that, you know, for some of you in newer council that you know, how services are aligned, it's still it's still a learning curve there, but I can stress to you that it's that our our services are already set up in a cooperative model. And this is not necessarily the case everywhere. So there are many examples, for instance, with the within library systems at within counties that they're actually operated by each local municipal partner and not at the county level. So there are longstanding reasons why it works better at the at the county level, and I won't get into those today, but it's a longstanding story in history relative to cooperative approach to to our services. Regarding the second question, how do we take how did our department take into consideration inflationary pressures? We are seeing a marked increase in the cost of our print materials and especially in the area of electronic resources as well. Whereas you're certainly impacted by inflation, but also it is impacted by other considerations like U S dollar pricing. And there's been significant mergers and acquisitions in the publishing market that is driving the market. There are fewer players, costs are going up. Nevertheless, we came to council last year with a tenure plan that sees two percent increases over that plan for our materials budget. We're sticking to it. We are also the beneficiary of timing for what are by far the two biggest costs in our budget. And that is wages and lease costs. So I've outlined to you the negotiated increase to wages within our Q P group, which does form the majority of our staff on the library side, one point eight percent. And also the timing of our new leases could not have been better relative to the previous lease would have had a CPI increase on that. So we've established a new base rate. But those are the two major drivers of of costs in our budget and our timing was pretty good relative to inflation. On the third question, to what extent have you considered offsets? In other words, what are we willing to give up? We were on a five-year replacement plan for the library's courier van. It was due to be replaced in two thousand and twenty-three. That was based on the fact that the previous vans have been repurposed into tourism usage. That is no longer the case. And so we're we're going to move that back and we're going to bring that forward when it can be truly justified. And that certainly won't be in two thousand and twenty-three and not likely in two thousand and twenty-four. So that that's that's number one. There is also a standing placeholder in our budget in anticipation of an expansion to Elmer Library to increase the lease costs. I think it's safe to say that that's not going to take place in two thousand and twenty-three. And so we're recommending to council that that also be removed from the budget in a reduction of sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. What we not do regarding question four or do differently to accommodate increased costs? We have been very fortunate to have maintained and even grown the number of donations we've received in our department, even through COVID. And we are experiencing a further decline in revenue. Some members of council are aware that we have moved to a fine-free initiative. We're in step two of that fine-free initiative. The revenue loss in two thousand and twenty-three for that move projected about eight thousand dollars. And we are mitigating that cost through our our donations and our approach to donations. And we're also finding any new initiatives. So we have a marketing campaign as an example. Those are coming from monies received through donations. We're not asking for any money from the levy or ratepayers to fund these extra projects. Excuse me. Question five, how are department's priorities linked back to the service delivery review, council strategic plan, and other corporate departmental plans? We are working very closely with St. Thomas Public Library, and that was a key recommendation out of the service delivery review. As an example, we are coordinating our collections so that if they purchase one collection, we purchase another. We have reciprocal arrangements. I mean, that in and of itself is a is a very, and that's not the case everywhere where you have reciprocity between systems. So the benefit is that our our ratepayers get the St. Thomas card, St. Thomas ratepayers, get it an elegant card, and they can then access online resources. And we try not to duplicate those because when they get them, we can have access to theirs. And so an example is our Overdrive ebook service relative to their cloud library service gives them gives our patrons a much wider array of materials. As well, the service delivery review recommended that the county embark on a digital transformation strategy. We have certainly ramped up our efforts to digitize our collections and museum and archives. And we got we saw the benefit of that through COVID. Were we able to continue to provide a level of service and continue to make collections available online? Most recently, our newspaper initiative, which received significant media attention. And and we're going to continue to embark on that on that strategy. And we've accomplished components of council's action plan when it comes to a new library leasing partnership I just outlined and eliminating fines on library materials. Okay, to the actual budget numbers. So I'm the leadoff here, so I'm going to just explain that for for all our departments that what you're seeing here are two years of actual, well, for some of us for capital and operating. And the on the second year of the actuals, the final budget category indicates the change relative to two thousand and twenty-three. So that's the number where you'll see the the increases or any reductions in the budget outlined. I'd also like to just note for on on our collective behalf that the numbers for two thousand and twenty-two are still projected. And and we're finalizing those numbers still. So what you're seeing is not necessarily the final final number. So to to work through the the budget slides, I mean, I won't I won't go into any great detail unless council has questions relative to any of the services as well in your budget package. In the in the tabs on B, I can point you to the specific lines in our budget that are outlined if you have any further questions on those. To address one one matter relative to the last two years, and I mean, it's it's, we don't know what normal looks like anymore. It's been, twenty nineteen is the last, you know, non-COVID impacted year, and particularly in our department, it has been a significant impact to our services. I mean, I even look back a year ago where we still had staff. I even look back a year ago, where we still had staff, some staff redeployed at Terrace Lodge assisting. So as to what normal looks like and what we're comparing to, it really is, it's it's pre-twenty twenty. But one of the things that we've certainly experienced, you may see that we had a slight surplus in in both those years, but like like was outlined previously. Most of that is attributable to wages. And one of the things I can point out to you is that in our library service, we have predominantly part-time staff, and those part-time staff don't get paid when they when they don't work. So if they call in sick, those shifts are often hard to fill on last minute notice, and they get they just get vacated. And we experienced our, like every workplace, our fair share of illness and misshifts. And at some point, so we were our operations were in a very precarious position in order to be able to even to open relative to the staffing levels that we were able to achieve. Second thing is, we're just relating to, and Amy can certainly hit on this as well. We had significant gapping in positions as a result of recruitment challenges. So we would post a position, and then we would, you know, have to work through that application process. And then by the time we got to the end of it, either the person would decline the position and or we'd have to re-repost. So we had with some instances where, and that's just common, that's happening. You know, and they get more acute in the home. So so again, I'll I'll leave the budget slides for any further questions you might have. But to summarize, there are no new requests for consideration in the twenty twenty-three budget. We're recommending that you defer the Elmer Library lease costs of sixty-one five. There were two pre-approved aspects to our budget, one relating to the renewal of our software on our ILS or integrated libraries software system, or catalog system. That contract is now taking effect, and that cost is reflected in the IT budget. And also, we adjusted the lease line of the budget to reflect a new base rate of seventeen dollars a square foot. That's also the those payments go back to local municipal partners for our facilities. Those numbers are in the budget and resulted in about a forty thousand dollar increase. But again, relative to what we would have experienced from CPI in the previous leases, it almost is is less, if not a complete wash there. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for presentation, Brian. Counselor Jones first.
Thank you, it's true, Brian. Or maybe Jennifer, with regards to the library vans, it been fully depreciated at this point, or is it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warren, to answer the question. It is in it's now in its fifth year of service, so I believe it would be fully depreciated call, you know, we're so now we're we're just maintaining and and operating and certainly one of the things that we've been hit with is particularly in twenty twenty-two is a significant increase to fuel costs, and we have that van on on the road every day. But we have still managed to stay within our budget for our library van.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a simple question. In the in the slide showing mandatory and discretionary services, the library is not mentioned under either one. The library is mandatory, correct?
Okay, yeah, I thank you to answer Counselor Cookett's question, Mr. Warden. Yes, I mean, there is the Public Libraries Act, so the provision of some type of library service has to be provided by a municipality. And the way we've gone about it historically and today is through a cooperative approach at the county level.
Counselors Jigir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So because you're the first presentation, so I think you might be able to answer that for all the others, but just to clarify, on the library budget, proposed budget slide, when it says budget ask, so it says two hundred twenty-one thousand. But throughout the presentation, I'm hearing more, we're sticking to the plan, we're sticking to the plan, we have savings, and I'm I was adding up about forty-nine thousand. So can you walk me through where the two twenty-one comes from?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, to answer Counselor Jigir's question. Those two costs are almost entirely attributable to the projected wage increase and the lease cost increase. And all other lines of the budget are not increasing.
Quick follow-up. So those were in the ten-year plan that we initially looked at, those were factored in. So when you say we're sticking to the plan, so this ask is not above and beyond what was already planned, correct? Okay, thank you for that.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to expand on that, the actual lease agreement is a benefit to municipalities because they get extra revenue. So that's a bit of a wash to some extent.
Anything further from members at this time for this department? Keeping, you know, in mind that you can always ask questions anytime on these on any of these processes moving forward. I would suggest, Julie, that if something comes along and somebody wants to ask a question, they'll shoot their arm in the air, and I'll find it, and we'll stop and deal with it.
Broke my own rule of not having my microphone on. But I'd like to introduce Michelle Harris, our Director of Homes and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to members of council. So on the screen before you, you'll see a photo of myself. I'm Michelle Harris. I'm the Director of Homes and Senior Services for our three county of Elgin homes. So I oversee the homes as well as the community-related senior services, so Meals on Wheels, Diners Club, and Adult Day Program. For a departmental overview, the next slide, again, the three county of Elgin homes total two hundred and forty-seven beds across the three homes. So we're providing twenty-four seven high-quality person-centered care. And that care is getting more increasingly complex with most residents coming with multiple diagnoses and responsive behaviors. And of course, an increased level of care requiring more care with eating, dressing, toileting, transferring the basic activities of daily living. What are the challenges for long-term care in our homes? Certainly, there's been a lot of legislative changes in twenty twenty-two. We had a change to the Fixing Long-Term Care Act twenty twenty-one and Ontario Regulation two forty-six twenty-two. So quality improvement, emergency planning, infection prevention and control, you heard a lot about that this morning, palliative care and resident rights, and we're hearing that we're going to have additional regulatory changes happening in probably quarter one of twenty twenty-three to those same pieces of legislation. Funding challenges, we've had additional COVID prevention and containment funding for the last couple of years. And that's we're hearing that that's anticipated to end in March of twenty twenty-three. And the other piece that's variable is we have what's called Case Mix Index Funding, which is variable. And so that funding is for every one of our residents on admission, we do an assessment, and we do one quarterly and with a significant change in status. That information of those assessments is then submitted to CAHI, the Canadian Institute for Health Information. And there's an analysis done annually for every long-term care homes data, and it produces what's called a CMI score, which is where we get our funding annually. So that's, there's a lot of flexibility or variability that could occur in that, but we do some great work at the homes to try and mitigate risk there. Health human resource challenges, again, that's been touched on a few times. So certainly, it's not unique to our homes or to long-term care or even to healthcare, but it's certainly a challenge that we continued to be presented for. And we can have additional costs related to overtime, or we could have risk in related to working short. So what are some of the opportunities for our homes? We've done a good job to date with our performance rating, maintaining good standing, but there's a lot of legislative changes, so we need to continue to focus on that and continue to develop our leadership capacity within our homes. Last year, we presented on the best practice spotlight organization designation, so continuing to look at that as an opportunity to focus on best practice guidelines and quality improvement in our homes. Continuing to build and leverage partnerships and find those efficiencies where possible and look to partner with human resources to be an employer of choice, along with that highly competitive environment of leveraging technologies, embracing more and more student placement opportunities, especially during consolidation to bring them on board. Those are opportunities that we're certainly focused on in the homes. The next slide. Again, considering opportunities for additional funding to support initiatives. So a new funding was brought forward by the Ministry of Long-Term Care or announced in October of twenty twenty-two, a nurse practitioner funding. This is a three-year ministry funding. It's a request base funding for up to two hundred and twenty-five nurse practitioners in the province of Ontario. It includes salary benefits and overhead overhead costs to a total of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. The the challenge here is that we must first hire the nurse practitioner, put that role in place, and then we submit a funding form quarterly for reimbursement. So there's no funding guarantee there. So there is a degree of risk. We're likely to incur some additional, if not full, investment in that program. While there's a lot of good opportunities there, we need to be mindful of that risk. Some guaranteed funding opportunities are the Preceptive Resource and Education Program, which is focused on frontline direct care staff. It's a mentoring program where staff would receive some educational through modules. And then we would utilize that learning or that mentoring program for student consolidation placements in our homes and also be able to apply this new learning to new higher orientation. Also, there's some guaranteed funding for medication safety technology funding. We're looking to implement the technology to support safe medication practices. So one area is computerized physician order entry, and another is barcode scanning. So we'll get to the questions, the same as what Brian Lima shared with you. But how did your department take into consideration the survey results? So overall, there was support within the survey for the three long-term care homes, where the majority of respondents did say they recommended increasing or maintaining investment in the homes. But while they made that recommendation or that's provided that support, they were also recommending we seek out more provincial funding to avoid increasing taxes. There was also a recommendation to prioritize our municipal applicants for placement within the county of Elgin homes. So what I'm currently doing is compiling information at county request regarding the number of county of Elgin residents in our homes, and I'll be presenting that information at a future meeting. So our budgetary approach with this question is really reflective of maximizing those provincial funding and Case Mix Index or CMI scores are funding, which aligns with the survey results. The second question, how did we take into consideration inflationary pressures? So again, implementation of pre-approved and or anticipated enhancements. Again, continuing to maximize our CMI and provincial funding. And when I talk about those provincial fundings, it's priority primarily the direct care funding, the allied health professional funding, and the supporting professional growth funding. Council carefully reviewed this information in twenty twenty-two and directed staff to utilize provincial funding to do our best to catch up on municipal contributions to long-term care. Question three, to what extent have you considered offsets? In other words, what are you willing to give up? I just want to preface with legislative mandates that prioritize and regulate our resident care and services. So we're working diligently through the work that we've done with our best practice spotlight organization to look on best practice guidelines, quality improvement initiatives, looking to try and minimize duplication, maximize efficiencies to offset costs where possible, which was delayed in twenty twenty-two and is coming into twenty twenty-three, is our scheduling program update and robocall implementation. That's anticipated to reduce manual processes, support timely, accurate schedules, decrease overtime costs, and improve staff morale and staff satisfaction. That equals recruitment and retention and should assist us with our budgetary measures. Also, a re-evaluation of a twenty twenty-two ask was the docket software implementation. So I I'm bringing that back to say I'm going to present with a savings of twenty-eight thousand seven twenty-five for year one and sixteen five one four annually. In an effort to find savings, we found a way to administer the same level of service internally. So that's a cost that we won't require moving forward. Excuse me. Question four, what will you do or sorry, what will you not do or what we do differently to accommodate increased costs? Again, you hear the theme of identifying efficiencies and opportunities to reduce municipal contributions. So I've talked about the direct care funding, the allied health professional funding, but investigating all funding opportunities. When we do an RFP, we look for opportunities of value-added service, so educational grants that are provided through those or rebates. And looking at federal and provincial initiatives such as the New Horizons for Seniors Program opportunities. And we'll continue to work with our Association Advantage Ontario to advocate for long-term care home needs and funding, but find ways for council to join forces for advocacy in this regard. Question five. So how are we aligning our priorities? First, with the Service Delivery Review Alignment. So again, ongoing monitoring of provincial policy changes and how it affects our homes. Continue to advocate for increased funding to offset that municipal contribution, online scheduling program, and robocall implementation in twenty twenty-three. And the next slide, the strategic plan alignment still serving Elgin. We're doing that through the legislative requirement implementation, committee and working group involvement, growing Elgin, doing that through our best practice spotlight organization program, and investing in Elgin by delivering mandated programs and service services efficiently and effectively. And the departmentally, doing a lot of work to continue, and sorry, continuing our best practice spotlight organization program and continuous quality improvement. Question six, any urgent items? So when we brought forward the Human Capital Management Project a while back, there was the discussions around additional capacity that were highlighted. We have temporary part-time clerk and ask for six months. One temporary part-time clerk for each home for a total cost over that six-month period of forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars to support the implementation of the software and the robocall, which will ultimately maximize efficiencies, reduce overtime costs and improve staff morale. There's also a risk in regards to our current visitor attendant role. So this role does our screening, our rapid antigen testing, our ministry and home tracking. And that's throughout the course of the pandemic, that's been funded through the COVID prevention and containment funding, which is anticipated to end March thirty-first. So I have not included any additional Mondays beyond March thirty-first in the budget, so there is that risk. Typically, we've heard that the funding is going to end sort of mid-year through conversations in the prior years, and it's always been continued when we have these types of responsibilities and accountability. So it's anticipated that if it's an ongoing requirement, we will see an extension of that funding, but it's possible that we may not. And we may have to look at how do we incorporate that responsibility or role into another position or looking for monies within the budget. So I just wanted to highlight that piece for council. So the next slide looks at is as Brian indicated is the operating budget to actuals. So if you're following along in the binder, it is tab A, slide twelve and thirteen, and the first couple of slides are for Terrace Lodge. So twenty twenty-one, again, some of the same themes that Brian spoke to with libraries. You know, where we had shifts that weren't being filled because we had recruitment and retention challenges. So we're underspent across all three of our homes for twenty twenty-one. And some of that was also related to the COVID nineteen prevention and containment funding that we received, which we also additionally received some nice funding for when we were in outbreak. So although outbreak's not ideal, we did receive additional funding for those situations. And that piece is no longer being provided. So that's the first slide for Terrace Lodge. And then the second slide shows, as Brian indicated, the twenty twenty-two budget to actuals for both operating and capital. And the forecast, again, forecasted variance, which helped to guide us to land where we are for the twenty twenty-three budget, which sees shows for both operating and capital, a total of four seventy-eight forty-five underspent. So it's a municipal offset, which meets the target sent by set by camps, sorry, set by council. And it aligns with the legislative targets related to those incremental increases for minutes per resident per day. Again, so that's that's being supported through those funding initiatives. And the next slide is Algon Manor, and that is tab A, slide fourteen and fifteen. That's the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Again, underspent in Algon Manor in two thousand and twenty-one. Again, the same reasonings, recruitment and retention challenges, COVID nineteen, funding those types of things. And the two thousand and twenty-two slide for Algon Manor, again, looking at municipal offset for two hundred and forty, sorry, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten, again, forecasted and related to the same funding initiatives that we have in place. So that's operating and capital. Bobier Villa is the next slide for two thousand and twenty-one in tab A, slide sixteen and seventeen. Again, this is the two thousand and twenty-one budget to actuals. You'll see the same theme underspent in two thousand and twenty-one for similar reasons. And then the budget ask for two thousand and twenty-three, the next slide shows again, twenty-two operating and capital budget to actuals and a forecast of three hundred and thirty-four, eight ninety-nine municipal offset, again, meeting the targets that were previously discussed with the council. And the next slide shows all three homes, the two thousand and twenty-three proposed budget. And so each home is is highlighted there with those same numbers above the home. Again, for a total offset of a million and ninety thousand, five fifty-four. This includes the operating and capital equipment for the homes, but it does exclude the facilities budget, which Brian Lima will speak to in his presentation. So I just want council to be mindful of that piece when we come to that section of the budget presentation. So in summary, the home's budget reflects and incorporates staffing enhancements that were previously approved by council in two thousand and twenty-two and staffing enhancements related to the Terrace Lodge redevelopment project as anticipated at project commencement. It also includes negotiated changes for wages and benefits per collective agreements. It has the ask for the temporary part-time clerks to support the scheduling and robocall implementation. It has capital equipment replacement to maintain equipment and in good service use. Inflationary increases that uncertainty related to the COVID nineteen prevention and containment funding beyond March two thousand and twenty-three. And I'll also note that we took the opportunity to move any homes-related IT software from the IT budget over to the nursing budget and the dietary budget. It's a more accurate reflection of the truly a home's budget item aligns with some new sources of funding. You heard me speak of the Medication Safety Technology Program funding. So we might as well make sure it's in the right spot and maximize cost recovery. And the next slide is just overall, the budget changes align with those provincial mandates of hours or minutes per resident per day and the legislative requirements. And the funding we're receiving, the service delivery review and the strategic plan, where we have a modest operating budget, where increases are reflective of all those things I've mentioned and the case mix index, as well as a modest capital or capital budgetary increase to support capital equipment replacement. And take this opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone have any questions on this? Yes, Counsel Whitner.
Thank you, Warden. Just a question to Michelle with the nurse practitioner. Would that be one for each home or one to cover all the homes?
So we worked it out three different ways of analysis, so the cost.
Julie.
My apologies through you, Mr. Warden, to Counsel Whitner. A great question about the nurse practitioner piece, and this is still, I would say conceptual at this point. We have to develop a full some, a full business case to support this. And it's because council would in fact have to assume the full risks associated with hiring multiple nurse practitioners. I also think there's a a chance, since there are limited spots available in the province for for full funding associated with this program. I think there's a chance that council could not receive the funding and have to hire and employ nurse practitioners. That's one risk. The other risk, I think, is that in order to recruit to Elgin County, we will inevitably have to top up significantly because I think our nurse practitioners are drawn to kind of our medical urban area of London rather than more rural areas, at least that's our experience as part of our discussions with health recruitment and that partnership committee there. So I would put a pin in that and expect that we'll bring more information back once we've done some more research and assess kind of the legal risks associated with onboarding somebody, not getting the funding, and then potentially changing our minds based on whether funding comes in. So more to come.
Yes, Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Michelle. You mentioned further ministerial things coming down the road in the first quarter. Has that been accounted for as? Anything that comes from the province usually costs us money.
Send through you, Mr. Warden, to Counsel Jones. So the changes were significant in two thousand and twenty-two. We're anticipating probably a lower volume of changes. With the changes in two thousand and twenty-two, there's been a lot of advocacy work for funding to support those changes. So fingers crossed, there would be some monetary attachment or financial attachment to that, but there's no guarantee. And so certainly, when information comes forward or legislative changes, I'll bring that forward to council to keep you well informed.
Julie, you had a response?
Oh, no, no, unrelated to that. If I could just back up a couple of slides and provide a point of clarification. So to the proposed budget for two thousand and twenty-three, Michelle mentioned that Brian Lima will be presenting as part of the engineering and facilities budget, the costs associated with the property and maintenance of each of our three long-term care homes. And I did just want to provide the actual number to council at this time. So you'll see Michelle's budget proposes a municipal offset of one point nine million. And to give council some sense and connect the dots, the property and facilities ask is nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three. So the actual, when you consider the homes as one kind of budget, including facilities, property, operations, equipment, it's really a forty thousand dollar municipal offset. So I don't want you to be misled by the million dollars you see on this screen.
Counsel McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Whoever maybe can answer the question. We'll start with Michelle. What's the province's recent announcement of allowing pharmacists to more responsibility? Is that anything that we can take advantage of at the home?
So thank you through you, Mr. Warden, to Counsel McPhail. So this is a question I've asked as well. So we're seeking clarity on that piece through our association and the ministry. So I don't have a final. Yes, thank you, but great question.
This is my first look at the budget. I find it quite daunting. When I drive by our long-term care homes, every sign has help wanted. We're looking for people. So my question to Michelle is, does this wage and benefit request reflect our current staffing or where you think we need to be in two thousand and twenty-three as far as staffing numbers?
Great question through you, Mr. Warden, through counsel. So the the budget as presented includes our current staffing with the required incremental increases as per legislated, working towards the four hours of care for direct care and the thirty minutes of allied health professional funding. I might be a bit confusing for you, but the answer basically is yes. And Julie, I don't know if you have anything else to offer.
For sure. Put simply, the budget covers our legislated requirements for staffing levels. Whether or not we're actually able to staff those levels has impacts on the budget. So you'll see sometimes the budget is less because we haven't been able to fill shifts. But on the flip side, sometimes it's greater because we've had to use overtime in order to fill those shifts to meet our legislated requirements. So when we talk about four hours of direct care or allied health professional care, the ministry has very, very rigid requirements for the staffing to resident ratios within our homes.
Thank you.
That's through you, Mr. Warden. I, my own experience with the nurse practitioners, I know there's a doctor's office that has a nurse practitioner in it. And my my thought is probably OHIP funds that. Is there an opportunity for something for having a nurse practitioner in nursing homes that they would fund that?
Through you, Mr. Warden, through to council. So a great question. I think that's as part of the analysis, some information that we can research further and bring back to to council for further discussion.
Anything further on this department at this time? Okay, thank you, Michelle.
So up next is our Director of Financial Services, who will cover the financial services procurement and risk portfolio.
Thank you, Julie. A little information about myself and your finance department on screen there. We have a complement of six full-time staff and myself, and we are a support department for the purpose of supporting all departments in the county as a centralized manner, so that the functions listed above are all centralized. This is a more efficient and allows departments to fully focus on their areas of expertise. Next slide. We ensure that the county is compliant with our governing legislation and through the procurement of contracted services and the preparation of audited financial statements, we're able to obtain obtain that goal. Budget discovery is done in collaboration with each department and is compiled to develop the annual operating and capital budgets. Once the budget is approved by council, our local municipal partners collect and remit the county's levy on our behalf. The levy provides revenue for the unfunded portions of the budgeted expense. Next slide. Transactional record keeping is important to ensure reporting and auditing has a necessary backup to support our spend. Cash and risk management, including procurement documentation and regular budget analysis, also support transactional record keeping. Bi-weekly and monthly payrolls are also processed through the finance department. And risk management is ever-present with internal spending controls and protocols in place to protect against fraud, ensuring that the corporation remains in good financial standing. Legislation landscape, we have been fortunate, as Michelle said, to have increased funding to support long-term care and some of our capital spend for various reasons. However, along with this funding comes much more ministry reporting and increased need for specific information to support the spend to avoid clawbacks. Reporting needs to also require us to review and manage the budget to ensure that items are spent in the correct envelopes. Budgetary challenges include the unpredictable marketplace that we currently are experiencing, and we've had to learn to be flexible and pivot quickly to ensure that deliverables are met and to also do more with less. Modernization, this takes time and research and money, but is necessary to enable us to meet the needs of the above two challenges that we are currently facing. Modernization, recently, we have rolled out payroll, because the payroll portion of Dayforce, our Human Capital Management Program, which you've all experienced this past week and which was just in time for the sunsetting date of our old payroll software. We have recognized that this new software will streamline payroll processing procedures between finance, HR and the homes. And as well, it will enable our employees to receive their pay stubs digitally and manage most of their personal information changes securely online without HR or payroll staff assistance. The next phase will be rolling out in early two thousand and twenty-three, and we expect that this rule that will be more, will provide more functionality as a system continues to come online. Continued collaboration with our treasures. We meet regularly or regularly, mostly quarterly, to discuss mutual concerns, and we find support through this collaboration. Purchasing will also continue to attend these meetings and reach out to our municipal partners to extend opportunities for collaboration on tenders. Additionally, we are here for all county departments to provide support for new opportunities as approved by county council. Question one of the survey. We heard that the general public wants us to focus on areas where there is actual or perceived duplication of effort in order to find efficiencies. This year, we are centralizing the purchase and distribution of office supplies to leverage the expertise of our purchasing department. Budget dollars were centralized, but not reduced this year. And we will review this after one year of experience to determine what would be a reasonable budget for this purpose. We do expect to experience decreased reconciliation time and improved accounts payable turnover for our vendors. Last year, we had plans to lease a new letter holding machine, but we were able to partner with Central Algon to engage in a shared equipment experience. We staff have reported that the machine is amazing and very quick, and our needs in this area are approximately once per month. But the machine offers an efficiency for us by saving staff time. We have outlined in our finance report that we will not have need of the expected four thousand dollars that would be required to duplicate having our own machine for this purpose. Throughout every budget process, we keep an overall high-level view of where there could be duplication within departments and how we can best avoid to keep taxes low as possible. Question two. How did your department take into consideration inflationary pressures on your department? The finance department is made up of ninety-seven percent wages and benefits and three percent expense expenses. Inflationary pressures are felt mainly through increases to the wages and benefits line. This year, position changes and level changes of new hires for existing positions helped to offset approved position increase, the approved position increase for purchasing that was approved last year. On the overall budget, finance has the practice of keeping many of the line items on the budget void of inflationary increases to force reductions across all departments. When needed, departments will come forward to council to share their required increase needs rather than receiving receiving inflation as a generally accepted reason. Question three, to what extent have you considered offsets? In other words, what are you willing to give up? As previously mentioned, we are actively involved in the joint effort to mitigate human resources, to migrate human resources, payroll and scheduling modules into Dayforce in conjunction with HR and the homes, which is expected to further streamline process between our departments. The efficiencies gained will be used to absorb increased reporting and enable us to move forward unnecessary cross-training of critical job functions with staff newly onboarded due to turnover. Question four. What will you not do or what will you do differently to accommodate increased costs? Since the cyber incident in April twenty-two, we have a different perspective on our existing financial processes and software. We do have some sunsetting software and some unsustainable processes that require streamlining and updating soon. Initial implementation of software does take time and effort, but the end result will set us up for success by mitigating errors, reducing processing time, simplifying cross-training, and eventually enabling existing staff to function more efficiently. Soon, the Dayforce project will be implemented fully, and we will have opportunity to do further research to identify what makes this make sense for us as a corporation. make sense for us as a corporation and where we are able to make the most improvement at the most efficient cost. Implementation of software is our goal that will seamlessly support our current financial system and that will take us from budget to financial reporting and enable better reporting for managers. Number five, what are your departmental priorities linked to the service delivery review? How are your departmental priorities linked back to the service delivery review, council strategic plan, and other corporate departmental plans? Evolution of related software within our area and between departments supports the service delivery review direction to modernize and look for efficiencies. Implementation of Dayforce Human Capital Management Program will be implemented early in 2023 with full service delivery review recommendation and will fulfill the service delivery review recommendation to assist with improved efficiencies and reduce workload. Additional purchasing staff complement supports the service delivery review recommendation to extend purchasing services to our local municipal partners to further investigate collaboration and reduce duplication of work where possible. Question six, do any urgent items need to be brought forward as standalone requests? Our current situation is that several of our internal processes experienced significant disruption this year and have had to be reworked and updated. One item that is still outstanding is our purchase order system, which our information technology, engineering, and purchasing department did utilize heavily prior to the disruption. This software was designed in-house, is standalone from our current financial system, and relies on software that has already sunset. So we cannot get support to make the necessary changes to make it work. The loss of this separately maintained database disabled our ability to track and report on orders and contracts accurately for purchasing. The request is that, due to the cyber incident and staff vacancies, we did not take on an accounting intern as planned in 2022, but opted to focus our efforts on a rehire for a vacated permanent position. As a result, we have unspent project funds from 2022 that we could repurpose to update the purchase of the order system within the parameters of Sage 300. The amount available as a carryforward is $14,450, and this would have no impact on the 2023 budget year, but may require a small annual subscription fee that would affect future years. The next slide is our 2021 actuals. And the financial services department, it should be noted, has no capital implications. The financial sections are located in section A of your package, page 19 to 21, and the 10-year plan is on page 787 in section B. So budget asked for the financial department is $13,068. The total operating cost for this department will be then $799,000 with the budget asked this year of $13,068. The following slide outlines the changes that have occurred in our department since 2022 that result in the total of the $13,068 that we're asking for. In summary, budget increases are minimal within year and related to wages and benefits. Support, we are asking for council support of ongoing investigation of software that will modernize budget and work with our current financial software and other financial functions. The carryforward of an existing project of $14,450 to support the implementation of the purchase order module for purchase services to improve tracking and reporting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for this department? At this time? Counselor Jones?
Not exactly how to word it. I just you're seeing staff turnover and everywhere there's staff turnover. But there's a cost associated that you do reduce wages because none of these start lower on the grid when you replace a person, but there's that intrinsic value that you lose and the training that goes along with it. I guess it's more philosophical than anything. The cost of training is that in there like Jennifer's time, Julie's time, just out there that's not accounted for.
Through you, Warden, to council. I will be speaking a bit more during my presentation on this issue, but Counselor Jones is correct that there's definitely a loss of productivity with turnover, and we don't include the cost of onboarding and training, but there's definitely a cost there to ours.
Thank you. It's a good observation, Counselor Jones.
And I guess further that, so next year, there will be a line item for extra wages, I assume. Or not, no, not really. Because it's lower in the grid already. Never mind.
Nope, sometimes you have to follow the thought through. Any other questions on this department? Which brings us to a break. I understand lunch is on. So Julie, what do you propose for this?
So maybe we can take a break until 12:20. Lunch is in the kitchen.
That sounds great. I didn't know if you had proposed on working through this, but I think as per our personnel policy, you'd better have your 30-minute lunch. So we will pause for the moment and then be back in 30 minutes, 12:20.
In the financial information of about $7,500. So that there is no capital budget for this year, and you'll see the change reflected there. So total operating in capital is $53,000. The budget ask is kind of an offset of $7,400. So I would be happy to answer any questions about that budget before I keep going.
Any questions for Julie at this point? Or carry on?
Great. So another service that's contemplated within corporate services is social services. Sorry, this is within corporate activities budget, and that's social services. So we do have a contract with the city of St. Thomas to deliver social services on our behalf, and that includes social housing, childcare, and income stability. So there's more information available on those services on the city's website as well. You can expect to have a delegation and more of an orientation coming from the Director of Social Services at your first meeting in February. So we did include a 6.3% increase to the budget which is anticipated in 2023, which is about $1.6 million in social housing. Childcare is a 13% decrease, $165,000 in 2023, and then income stability is up slightly from $355,000 to $460,000. So Southwestern Public Health is question, Mr. Warden.
Sorry, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a question for you to CEO. The services that the city of St. Thomas has provided, what kind of connection we have in dealing with them?
What's the connection that you have with dealing with the social services group, delivery agent?
So I would say a close connection, though we we haven't had reason to interfere with the service delivery. It's clearly identified within the contract that we have with the city of St. Thomas for both EMS services and social services. It's all within one contract, which details kind of service requirements. But council receives bi-annual updates and more frequent updates as needed and as requested with respect to each of their service areas, so social housing, childcare, Ontario Works. So I would say we have a close working relationship with social services. Does that sufficiently answer or address your question? Or is there something specific? So Southwestern Public Health works with municipalities and community agencies to ensure the health and safety of our residents. And this, our health unit extends from Oxford, Elgin, into the city of St. Thomas. So Southwestern Public Health is governed by an autonomous board or a special purpose body that operates as its own entity. So the province and municipality, so Oxford, Elgin, and St. Thomas, they all share in the costs of public health. And essentially, what the health unit does is they impose a levy on on the constituent municipalities, and we have no say into that levy increase, save and except for board member representation, which you've appointed Counselor Cookett and Counselor McPhail to. So we have included a 2% placeholder for Southwestern Public Health. And this is the placeholder reflects a $1.755 million budget amount in 2023, and this is up $1.21 million from 2022. So some challenges within our service areas, considering kind of all corporate services, admin services, managing expectations. So we have you know, counselors, committee members, the public, staff, you name it. We work hard to meet and manage expectations. Keeping up with legislative changes is another key responsibility for our department and balancing what's happening up and out with council committees and legislative changes at senior levels of government with what's happening within our organization. So that's what our team does in support of council. The opportunities definitely outweigh the challenges. We have a new council, which means new opportunities to innovate. We have the opportunity to continue to enhance transparency and accountability, modernize the way we do our service delivery, leverage technology in different ways, and engage our community in new ways and engage our staff in new ways. So looking forward to 2023 and beyond, we also have a great opportunity to leverage partnerships in order to find efficiencies to identify more shared services with our local municipal partners and present new opportunities and new ideas to council and to our community. So the next three slides include some survey results and comments, so we'll skip ahead because those simply regurgitate what was included in the survey. And what we can see from the survey responses are that the community really cares. The community cares about services that they receive through the health unit, through social services, especially affordable housing. We realize through these comments that we can still do a better job communicating with our public and enhancing transparency and accountability. We can work harder to meet their needs for enhanced transparency in particular. We also recognize we need to be competitive, and we can't lose sight of that. We need to be efficient, and we need to continue to find ways to modernize our services. We also learned that it's going to be really important to share information about our budget with our community, about how it works, about where and how money is being spent, and about what we're doing to contain costs. So that'll form part of our next steps at the end of today's budget presentation. So with regard to question two, when it comes to inflation, we took a really conservative approach. We made cuts where we could. We reduced costs as much as possible, and we we expect, and my expectation is that we will continue to to take a conservative approach and find in-year savings as well. So that will carry on beyond just council's approval of the budget. So with question three, which is about offsets, we are considering offsets, and I think that's been clear through the previous presentations. So for corporate services, corporate activities, we don't have new programs or initiatives. Instead, we looked at ways to find offsets within our current services. But there are some things that we could do. You can always look for more offsets. Things in the past council has looked at their own investment in the community grant program. As one example, looked at investment in the Warden's banquet you know, in the ways that they've budgeted themselves. Question four. What will we not do or do differently? So the list was provided to council in advance. But like every department, we're going to look to our senior government for more funding. We're going to try to, for 2023, increase legal billings because we expect they'll be we'll have greater capacity while we have a succession plan in place, and the county solicitor has transitioned out, new director in place, but we have a mentorship program which will give us a chance to recover additional revenue. We want to rely on more robust performance measurement and continuous improvement tools and methods within our departments. And if we initiate those within corporate services, then they can be spread once tested out to other areas within the corporation as well. We've secured new tenants for 450 Sunset. Thanks to council today, we have new tenants coming across the hall, Community Paramedicine. We also, very recently, as recent as last week, vacated another suite on the third floor, which we'll try to find a tenant for as well. So we're finding creative ways to increase revenue that's coming in beyond just relying on our senior government funders. So question, the next slide is mostly a duplicate slide, my apologies, except for the last two bullets. So we're going to continue to focus on mitigating risk through managing insurance claims. And we, through our internal legal team, we hope that there'll be some cost savings associated with mitigating risk in that regard as well. So question five. There's a huge list of how our work in corporate services and council's work and the Warden's work all links back to corporate plans, mostly originating from this department and these departments. So I won't go into great detail there, but one is missing from the list, and it is the market salary review. So when looking at council's composition and the Warden's compensation, not composition, and the year-over-year increases, there's a bit of a jump because of the market salary review. Question six, urgent items. So corporate insurance was previously considered by council. One other item is we expect to go out for RFP for a new audit firm in the spring. So I didn't include that on the list here as well. So the budgets are there, administrative services, which has a budget ask of $110,000 in red on the top of the slide. This really accounts for a pre-approved additional solicitor as part of a succession plan. So you'll see the summary slide and then you'll see a big increase in corporate activities where the budget ask is 3.26 million. And this is where the increase in levy is proposed and terrace lodge redevelopment funding. Those are the two main factors to the major bump that you're seeing here. As well, we see increases in health unit, social services, amortization, WSIB and insurance, which council contemplated, EMS building maintenance. And for corporate services, so the next set of slides. This budget really covers things like recognition, postage, the audit fees, payroll charges, and insurance does account for most of the $175,000 bump. And we have moved and transitioned all office supplies across the corporation into corporate services. So Jen mentioned that during her presentation, but this is where it is actually reflected. So Jen mentioned that during her presentation, but this is where it is actually reflected. And this is one of those corporate-wide initiatives that we're, we're undertaking this year in order to find savings and better ways of doing business. So summary slide is provided with more information. And I would be happy to answer any questions about any of these budgets before we move into emergency management.
Before you go Duncan, I want to ask just a formatting question. Julie, on the, for example, the budget ask for corporate activities is in brackets, I assume it should not be in brackets.
It's negative.
It is negative.
Due to the fact that we got increased funding.
All right, okay. Thank you for that. Okay Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To Julie, the social services increase, is that a hard number? Is that what we've been told is the increase? Whereas the health unit is just a number, a placeholder. What is the contingency if that 2% placeholder comes in at 4.3%? We do. Yeah, if we all emptied our wallets here, that still wouldn't cover it. So I guess it's, it's certainly imperative that us two representatives going to the health unit must, must certainly bring the message that there is just the one taxpayer and that, you know, we can only reach our hand in their pockets so far. And so hopefully, certainly I'm, I'm committed to trying to work with, with that 2% placeholder now. But like I say, been there before. Really, we won't know until, but it's past any idea when that budget will be passed. So possibly we might have better numbers before we finalize our budget.
For sure. And through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor McPhail, I was in touch with Cynthia, the executive director or CEO for the health unit last week, and she did ask about our timeline. And I presume that's for the purposes of aligning the approvals of the Southwestern Public Health and, and engaging board members in their budget process. So I think you can look forward to that in the coming weeks.
Councillor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Perhaps, perhaps my last question wasn't very clear. And perhaps this needs to be discussed at another time, but I do want to comment on it. When you're looking at the social services that St. Thomas provides, one of them is affordable housing and homelessness, which affects all of us. And I'm not sure what role county plays in helping with affordable housing and homelessness. And, you know, municipalities are faced with that kind of thing, especially Elmer. So I'm just kind of looking at, I think it's really important that somehow we have some kind of conduit to the city of St. Thomas to talk about affordable housing and homelessness and what kind of help we can get there.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor Cookett. This is a great question and this is a question that came up from the past mayor of Elmer as well. And in response, we did invite Elgin Middlesex or St. Thomas Elgin Social Services to deliver a presentation that was very much Elgin-centric. So they do have a responsibility as a designated delivery agent to provide services equally to the city of St. Thomas and to the county of Elgin. And so I think those members of council who were here could perhaps comment to the fact that council was satisfied with the presentation. And I think it could be just a matter of, we don't have quite enough information about what, what they are doing in Elgin in order to feel like we're getting good value, perhaps that's. So we can hopefully address that in two weeks' time when they come and do a presentation to council and figure out next steps together as to whether we could be or should be doing more and the whole concept of value for money.
If I may, Mr. Winias, thank you. I, I certainly hope that I can find out more about what the agreement was in the last council. And you said they are making a presentation in two weeks. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, to clarify, it's the first meeting in February. So there is a slide that indicates break, but I think we're okay to go. The next section of the budget includes emergency management. So emergency medical services and a large portion of this budget and budget conversation will be held in open session. And there is a closed session report associated with this. So I may breeze through that, the budget information fairly quickly because I am seeking direction from council. Emergency management and Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School. So we can skip over the departmental overview, emergency medical services. This will be just a reminder for council, this is a contracted service. So Medavi EMS Elgin, Ontario is contracted to provide land ambulance services in Elgin County. And that is an arrangement we have with Medavi to provide both in Elgin and in the city of St. Thomas. We do have ministry designation as the designated delivery agent for this service. And the cost that, the cost to deliver this service is distributed across Elgin and St. Thomas. It's population-based. So keep those in mind as we go through the budget. So any change to service, just as social services, they, they've changed their budget and it has an impact on us. We have to keep in mind that any changes in service level to land ambulance will have an impact on the city of St. Thomas's budget as well. Community paramedicine is coming soon to the county building and to our communities, which is something to look forward to. And that's information that's been previously shared with council. So for 2023, a number of challenges to keep in mind, call volume for EMS is growing, but our response times remain stable. Elgin, Elgin's ambulance service compares well to its peers and is second lowest cost provider when compared to regional comparators. The first year of the Elgin Middlesex Regional Fire School was well received by those who attended, but enrollment targets were not met. And as a result, and this is kind of rehashed throughout the presentation, but cost containment measures and careful budgeting moving forward will be required. And we need to, as a corporation, consider emergencies and crises as the new normal, but make sure that we're planned in the event something terrible happens within our community. So other opportunities, business continuity planning. So we're hoping to get the support of our newly recruited manager Andrea Lockleen, who you met today, to help us across the corporation with making sure that our businesses will continue in the event of an emergency. We hope to redesign our emergency plan and enhance our shared services with our partner municipalities. We will revamp and redesign the business model to support year two of the fire school operations. And we will support the launch of the community paramedicine program. So there were, there was a lot of positive and supportive feedback received through the, the survey with regard to EMS services. Not a lot of folks mentioned community safety or community emergency response. So we could probably do a better job educating our public that that's a key priority. Probably if they'd answered this after the winter storm, they might answer, have provided different answers. We did take into consideration inflationary pressures and this is really ongoing. So when I say we have to redesign the business case, that is in progress, but has yet to be presented to council. But we are looking at the need for course props, travel expenditures. Can we switch to Zoom instead of driving all over the county in all instances? And we have reduced the supplies budget. So we hope to, in terms of offsets, get back to basics and eventually mitigate all extra purchases. What will we do or not do? Well, we'll move towards a model of very careful budgeting and oversight, analyze break even points for courses and communicate increases in course costs and why to our partner municipalities who are using the service. So there are clear links to the service delivery review and to the strategic plan. And for question six, I think we do have to bring forward to council for review and approval a corrected course calendar. So this was sent out by administrative staff in advance of going to council in air. So we will, will undertake a careful review and present any changes to what we've proposed to our municipal partners to council and communicate that through. So ambulance budget ask is to be determined. So I recommend that we put a pin in this and then commit to, once some direction from council is received, then providing lots more information for the public at the next meeting in January. It does have some contract implications, which is why it's considered in closed session. For emergency measures, the budget ask is 84,213. And this really accounts for a change because in 2022, we onboarded a new emergency management program coordinator for a few months. And this accounts for the full salary in 2023. And that really forms the, the bulk of the change there. And talked about cost recovery, cost containment. We also have anticipated recoveries of $5,000 per municipality partners with us on emergency management. And we've included a placeholder of 2% for cost of living increases. And cost of fire training officer is offset by local municipal partners in the amount of approximately $49,000. Moved office supplies out and we have opted not to proceed with a, the purchase of a trailer for this department in the amount of $15,000. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that Julie. Any questions? Yes, councillor McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Emergency management is a mandated. We have no choice but to make sure that we have that up and running.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to councillor McPhail. Council will recall that prior to developing a department to support this, this was a function that was my responsibility. And so now we've seen how the, the legislated requirements for this service have changed since I started five years ago. So we now better recognize the need for having dedicated staff who really focus on supporting our communities and ensuring their safety and wellbeing.
And I am correct in the fact, I believe that at one point in time, it was a responsibility for each lower tier municipality to have their own emergency managers coordinator in place. And it was something that was reported to the ministry to make. So I, I guess the thought at that time was it was better for all of us to have one facilitator out of the county to do it. I think that's worked out very, very well for us. If you wish, yeah. I was just going to suggest that you have five of the local municipal partners involved.
Yeah, so we did develop a shared service and I'll backtrack a little bit more. Each municipality is required still to have a dedicated community emergency management coordinator. And that in some instances is your fire chief, sometimes it's your CAO or clerk. But we developed a shared service where we brought on a new manager of emergency management, who then expanded his offerings to five of our municipal partners. So he, now she would act as the primary CMC if available in the event of an emergency. But in, in the meantime, the value that municipalities get for the $5,000 contribution is emergency planning resources, education toolkits. We're able to do more even across the county through this partnership. So we hope over time that we can develop this service to all of our municipal partners in a way that we have with fire services or fire school services, fire training services, it's another example. So a great, great resource and a great shared service.
Seeing nothing else, let's move forward.
Great. So provincial office, office offenses administration. Since 2001, county's POA office has been responsible for the administration of court services, including setting trial dates, collection of fines laid under the Provincial Offenses Act. So there are two budgets included within the 10-year plan. One is collections and one is POA budget. So you can look for both of those in, in your agenda package. Some of the challenges that we faced from 2021 on was navigating virtual trials and keeping up with demand for services. So last summer was a fine example where we had an influx of parking tickets from central Elgin. And we had to assign, temporarily assign additional resources to help try to meet the timelines associated with those tickets. So sometimes there are kind of peaks and valleys associated with the, the work. And it has to do with local bylaw and the number of tickets laid within our communities. So opportunities, as with every department across the county, there is an opportunity to modernize services with a continued focus on changing legislation and a focus on excellent service delivery. This is, this can be an area where customer, customer service is challenging for our staff because people are often not as friendly as they are entering the libraries when they have to pay a ticket or, or attend court. So our team next door at POA does a really fantastic job diffusing situations and connecting with our community through that service. So the feedback we've received through question one of the survey was not directly related to POA. We aren't introducing any new initiatives and we recognize the need to continue to find deficiencies. How did we take into consideration inflationary pressures? Well, we've conservative salary increases, not recommending salary increases that keep pace with annual inflation rates. So we are keeping that placeholder consistent across the county and looking to contain costs. This is a service that we provide on behalf of our local municipal partners. And we aren't, we, we weren't able to easily identify things that we would give up in order to, or the impacts would be quite great to our, the service we provide to our municipal partners. So nothing was immediately evident and I want to be transparent about that. But we are working to contain existing workloads within the current staffing complement because we are seeing workload go up and so we aren't recommending adding staff. What will you do or not do and what will you do differently to accommodate increased costs? We will try to leverage technology to find savings and evaluate workflow processes to, to find ways to improve those workflows. The department is of course linked to the service delivery review, which speaks to shared services and council strategic plan, which is serving Elgin. And in terms of urgent items, which is question six, you will hear from Brian Lima as part of his facilities budget that this facility next door to us does need a backup emergency generator. So 2021 budget, if we looked at actuals and, and year-over-year changes, similar to the library services budget, we had a number of reassigned staff and staff who didn't work as many hours through the pandemic. So you'll see some changes there. And if we looked at the summary chart, you'll see that the budget ask is $1,000. Happy to answer any questions there.
Not seen any?
So IT is another critical service area. So the IT department is responsible for So the IT department is responsible for the county server network equipment. It is a shared service that we provide to the municipalities of Central Elgin and Bayham. And in terms of support, we support nearly seven hundred users, seven hundred computers, one hundred and fifty network devices, seventy servers, and thirty-five locations. That includes some local fire halls, that includes our libraries, BOA. So a pretty big service area. Some of our significant challenges. We are still responding to the cybersecurity incident that happened in April and May of two thousand twenty-two. So policy implementation is outstanding. Council has already undertaken some work in this regard, which is great, but we have a lot of heavy lifting to do to get us to to where we should be. Capacity and capability are challenges where some work requires specialists. Budget challenges, we have to formalize and review the shared services that we're providing to ensure that we're recovering costs. We are faced with escalating costs of cyber insurance and council contemplated that at its most recent meeting in December. We are currently evaluating the use of contract contracted services in this department. So heavy reliance on multiple contracted services, not just our relationship with Stronghold. We are also doing a fulsome audit of all of the subscriptions that we pay for, understanding that some of them aren't even being utilized but are being paid for. Very few, but still worth mentioning. Service delivery review. So council will be tasked with evaluating the hybrid service model that's currently in place and was put in place in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. And I will just note the current model of having me as the interim director of IT is not sustainable. So opportunities build on our past successes and support new ways of doing business across all functional areas of the county. We've also had the opportunity of trialing trialing a pilot hybrid work model for this department using an external managed IT firm in our internal team. So question one, how did we take into consideration the survey results? So connectivity did come up, and this is something that's managed more through corporate services and corporate activities, but worth mentioning that there is a link to IT. As a support department, we didn't expect to receive a lot of public comments about IT services. So that's why that response is not very robust. So when it comes to inflationary pressures, we did consider the extent of hardware purchases required, and this is pursuant to council's new IT hardware replacement or equipment replacement policy as passed in December. We are carefully reviewing all membership subscriptions and the use of consultants. We found some immediate savings, and I think we could probably find some more as we continue this work. To what extent have we considered offsets? Well, we are considering extending the life cycle of some equipment wherever we can while ensuring it's compliant with council's policy and looking at new ways of doing business. So what will we do and not do? Or do differently? Some of this will be considered in closed session as it's contract discussions. But there are lots of things that we can do. We can develop external partnerships to enhance our infrastructure. We can work closer with municipal partners in our region. We could even contemplate sharing services for kind of specialty areas, which was also detailed within the Service Delivery Review. We can work hard to manage risks and leverage our own assets, programs, and that includes staff, technology, hardware, all things considered. We have lots of opportunities to continue to improve IT at Elgin County. And finally, kind of to repeat here, we can ensure what we are billing to our to local municipal partners is actually accurate and reflective of the work that we're providing. So we are link, we have some links between IT to council's strategic plan and to the Service Delivery Review. And then urgent items will be discussed today in closed session. So the budget ask is an offset of forty-eight thousand dollars, and I suspect that with a bit more time, we can actually do a little bit better. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council Noble.
We're going to discuss that more in close session. Okay.
All right. So I have a break slide. Anyone need a break?
Everyone good to go?
Keep going. Great. So I'd like to turn things over to Brian Lima, General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise and Deputy CIO, who will take care of three consecutive budget presentations.
Thank you, Julie. Through you, Mr. Ward, the council. As you all know, Brian Lima, I'm the General Manager of Engineering, Planning and Enterprise, and as indicated before the Christmas holiday season, the services and portfolios for which I provide oversight include engineering, transportation, corporate facilities, enterprise, which includes economic development tourism, and then planning services. So two thousand twenty-three challenges. So as it relates to specifically focusing on engineering corporate facility, so some of the challenges or the services that we offer right now started about in two thousand twenty with the support of council, we brought engineering, detailed design, contract administration, inspection services in-house. During the break, with a brief discussion with my staff, we approximate the savings realized to date in in the magnitude of at least quarter million dollars. So it's it's been a highly successful service provision offering since that date. Asset management plan is endorsed by County Council last year, identified as it relates to transportation and corporate facility assets. Asset value of, or sorry, transportation asset value of one point two three billion dollars. It's a significant portfolio of assets. County road corridor control, everything from permits to approvals is is also involved in that portfolio. As also communicated through your orientation, Elgin County is a unique county in that we rely upon our local municipal partners, your staff, to maintain our roads. And so in that regard, we have road maintenance agreements which exist in details, expectations in that regard. And then finally, geographic information systems, I apologize, not global. Mapping is also a service provision that we offer, and at the county, we are the enterprise license holder on behalf of all the county as well as each of your municipalities. On the corporate facility side, slightly different in terms of design complement. We offer and have assisted some of our local municipalities with conceptual design and contract administration. There's a significant, as I'm sure council notes, there's significant volume of corporate facility investments ongoing at any given time. Maintenance of twelve corporate facilities is included in that portfolio. So alongside administration building, there's obviously Heritage Center, POA, each of our long-term care homes, our ambulance facilities, et cetera. Again, in the asset management plan is endorsed by council, asset value for each of our corporate facilities is estimated at one hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. And staff also undertakes from time to time building condition assessments. So some of the challenges that we are faced with as it relates to development of the two thousand twenty-three budget included inflation. This morning's council award of the roundabout Centennial now cost increases based on unit prices range anywhere from on average about eighty-five percent increase year over year. Facility maintenance staff recruitment, while we're fully, while we have a full maintenance staff complement, our most recent hiring endeavor was a challenge. As with all areas along throughout the corporation, finding competent skilled labor is a challenge, and with planned retirements in the near future, that will continue to be a challenge. Ministry regulations across all departments within within this department continues to introduce interesting challenges along the way. Our GIS, we've heard repeated calls from local municipality staff that they'd like to see additional provision of services. Many local municipalities, as each of you well know, may not have in-house expertise as it relates to GIS. So, you know, from time to time, we do receive requests and assist wherever possible and whenever possible. And then finally, a transportation master plan, council can expect recommendations coming out of that likely end of Q two, beginning of Q three from our consultant, which will present budget challenges moving forward for future consideration. So opportunities. In accordance with Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight dash seventeen, all municipalities are required to maintain an asset management plan, and that is a living, breathing document. And so there's opportunities to finesse and refine that plan as as it moves along through its lifecycle. TMP recommendations for which I just spoke of. I would say by the end of Q one, this council will have the opportunity to endorse a new official plan for the county. So more to come in that regard. Talked about GIS service provision to LMP. We're continually looking to modernize and automate our processes wherever possible. And specific examples are consent or land division committee consent approval process. It's currently administratively burdens process, burdensome process, and so we're looking to automate that application approval process. Renewal of the road maintenance agreement in two thousand twenty-two. A specific service delivery review was undertaken as it relates to the road maintenance agreement. And so that consultation efforts with each of our local municipal partners has resulted in a new road maintenance agreement with which this council will consider in the very near future. Ongoing efforts to modernize our economic development tourism efforts continues with increased dependence on internal staff supports in that regard, and we've got quite an exceptional skilled group in that regard. As some or all may be aware, Ministry of Environment, Climate Change is moving away from their environmental compliance approval or ECA process and are encouraging and actually ultimately requiring municipalities to seek linear infrastructure environmental compliance approval. So Elgin County is a leader in that regard and assisting some of our LMPs through that process as well. Within the last two months, we've been working collaboratively with some of our local municipal partners on design supplemental specifications. Elgin County has never had its own standalone design document now that we offer in-house design as opposed to relying upon others and and referring to their standards. We now have our own. And two of our local municipalities have joined us in that regard, and and we look forward to working with them on enhancing those yearly. And then finally, support for high-speed internet has been a paramount of importance to pass council, and and we trust will continue with this council as well. And so staff are doing everything we can to support that endeavor as well. So with respect to the questions, how did our department take into consideration the survey results overwhelmingly or with respect to the majority of response we we heard from public infrastructure, roads, bridges, and and our assets are critically important and investment in in order to maintain those assets was strongly encouraged. The respondents also indicated a willingness to increase spending on select priorities and 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 so in support of council's endorsed asset management plan, a program is put forth before you and incorporated as part of the two thousand twenty-three budget. Terms of inflationary pressures, what did we do as part of the two thousand twenty-three budget? Annually, we review unit costs year-over-year and adjust pricing accordingly. And and once again, we've done that. For two thousand twenty-three, we have actually reduced a capital program before you and deferred some select projects which which we are proposing, but ultimately up to council to decide, and I will speak to that momentarily. We've also explored and and are exploring extending lifecycle of assets with additional rehabilitation strategies. So with respect to the offsets that were considered, so for the two thousand twenty-three budget, staff is proposing the deferral of the reconstruction of St. George Street within the municipality of Central Elgin. Single line reconstruction within the small section of Port Talbot Hill on County Road sixteen is also proposed to be deferred. And there'll be, and there's select other projects which which have also been recommended for deferral. On the Terrace Lodge project investment is proposed for the main building, which was not included as part of the redevelopment, but was scaled back accordingly. What will we do differently? So again, as mentioned, we reviewed our budgets, our project scopes, explored opportunities to reduce the scope or change the scope, and we're and and also explored project deferrals. A greater focus on investments on additional rounds of rehabilitation and and then obviously council has the opportunity to consider and will have the opportunity to consider as part of the TMP opportunities to divest assets or may may consider sale of assets. Terms of the various strategic plans, list of each of those plans are before you. With respect to transportation, predominantly, you know, we're driven by a road maintenance agreement. Our asset management plan is endorsed by council, and then obviously the TMP as previously mentioned will be a guiding document moving forward. So urgent items that we brought before council, item number one was already addressed this morning, and we thank you for that. Julie previously mentioned standby emergency generator required for Provincial Offenses Act building that is that is required specifically with respect to that matter. We receive a lot or we're recipients of a lot, significant number of brownouts throughout the year, and and every time court services are in are on and those brownouts occur, court services have to end. So with standby generator, those court services can be maintained. And then finally, the urgent requirement to award a new air handling unit, condensing unit atop of Terrace Lodge. So with respect to each of the slides here, tab A, starting on page fifty-nine, I won't specifically go through this, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions that council may have. So that first side was two thousand twenty-one. Here is two thousand twenty-two and then proposed two thousand twenty-three budget. So overall, as it relates to the ask specifically as it relates to administration building, we are asking for just over two and a half million dollars. The majority of that ask is associated with funds associated with the elevator. So when the elevator project was awarded, it was awarded by previous council, knowing that inadequate funds had previously been identified, and then council had agreed to incorporate the required funds to support the balance of the project. And so again, the majority of those funds are in in support of the elevator project that's currently ongoing. Paris Lodge, again, two thousand twenty-one details. Twenty-two, along with two thousand twenty-three. Moving through to Elgin Manor, again, two thousand twenty-one, followed by two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. And then finally, Wilbier Villa, two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three for comparison. So in total, over the three homes, and Julie had mentioned this previously, Michelle had identified a savings of a million dollars, the majority of which the ask is to support the homes on the facility side, and here the total ask in that regard is nine hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. A planned investment in each of the three homes. So on engineering services, again, the details associated with this item are shown here, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. So budget asked for two thousand twenty-three, again, noting the the savings of project deferrals as previously noted, the budget asked for two thousand twenty-three is just so almost two point three million dollars. So in summary, in accordance with council's endorsed asset management plan, in accordance with Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen, we are recommending maintaining the plans. we are recommending, uh, maintaining, uh, the plans, investment strategy, uh, which includes sustainable investment in the record, uh, and required, uh, infrastructure in order to remain compliant with the applicable regulations. Any questions?
Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, regarding the generator, for some reason, I recall a council approved that for twenty twenty-two and I think I recall awarding the purchase, awarding the installation contract all of twenty twenty-two. So is this a different one?
No, through, uh, Mr. Warren to Counselor Shiger, additional funds are required in order to support that project. So, uh, um, preliminary tender estimates have come in and, and unfortunately they are under budget. And so additional funds are being added to this year's budget in order to get that project off the ground.
Follow-up. Uh, so is it purchased already or we awarded the contract but did not proceed? Is that?
So detailed design in support of the standby generator is completed. Tender was released. Uh, award of the tender has not, uh, been tabled before council just yet.
Counselor Widner.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Through to Brian, just what kind of money were they talking for this generator?
Through Mr. Warren, the Council Winner, I believe memory serves it correctly, I think we're under budget by a hundred or over budget by a hundred thousand dollars.
So the total number is roughly?
I, I can, I can, uh, report back to council with, with a true number. And again, you'll see it in a, in a full report, fulsome report, uh, as it relates to the award of that project when it comes to council.
Sounds a bit high, doesn't it?
Certainly, through Mr. Warden, um, generators, uh, the cost of generators have gone up and the lead times are extensive in the magnitude of one year. So.
Yeah.
Counselor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Warden, um, the need for the generators because the hydro supply is not reliable. That's the only need.
It's, uh, the need is to maintain continuous operation of court services during periods of, of blackout or brownout, which, uh, appear to be uh, growing in frequency.
Counselor Sloan?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure I understand. So it would be what parts of the, you, you, you're concerned that if there was a brownout or a blackout, which parts of this building would be required? So versus like having the internet go down or your cyber crisis where there was an email for a month?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warren, the Council Sloan, uh, yeah, great question. So for clarification, the administration building uh is supported by emergency standby generator along with the Heritage Center. Um, the P O A facility, however, is its own independent electrical service, has its own independent electrical service and is not supported by a generator. And so the generator being proposed is to solely support that facility.
Julie.
Uh, to provide counsel with some background. So the generator was contemplated as part of the new build uh, and in an effort to find savings was removed from the construction costs at the time. Uh, since that time, uh, we have found it to be incredibly disruptive. Uh, when we have extended power outages at a time when we have organized to have, say, a hundred and forty trials in one day. Um, and power at, to Brian's point, um, hydro outages has has been more frequent. And we do have a backup plan, which is to use the, and an agreement with the Saint Thomas Courthouse to be able to go and use a courtroom, though it is really hard to re relocate court, uh, in the midst of a a power outage as well for emergency planning purposes. Should something happen to the county admin building, it would be great to be able to use P O A, uh, Provincial Offenses Administration as a backup for emergency purposes as well. So if I may just continue on and, um, in response to Counselor Widner's co- uh, question about the cost of the generator. Um, so in twenty twenty-two, it's listed at eighty-five thousand and twenty twenty-three, it's listed at a hundred and forty thousand. Yeah. And, and so if I may, just to continue on that thought, we did bring forward a report to council that, um, that relayed the significant increase and council opted to defer the project at the time. So I think. Are you lean duck? We'll bring back more information about. Yeah. And I wasn't comfortable making that decision. Yes. So we'll bring that back for council's consideration as a project, kind of a standalone project.
Yep. Counselor Jones.
It, it seems to me, being on the committee when the, it was built, that, uh, a lot of security is based on electronics as well. If electronics go down, security is a big problem, especially when you have prisoners.
Thank you. Counselor Noble.
I, I think it's disappointing that we have to spend money because we can't rely on the hydro service. And I know the people in the neighborhood behind us here in the Norman subdivision, there's a lot of folks in there too that are looking for generators for their house because their power goes out. I, I'm just wondering if there is a way for us to force Ontario Hydro to come to the game, maybe if we have to actually buy a generator because we can't rely on them. Um, seems like it's their problem that's becoming our problem.
Point taken, but it would, uh, depend upon what's the cause of the outage. Is it storm related or is it infrastructure related? Infrastructure related is, uh, an issue you can take on the task at, but I haven't found anybody yet to control the storms.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do think, uh, we have some, had some extended periods without power associated with um, like they were pre-planned but associated with maintenance that extended well beyond what what was communicated to us by Hydro One. So you think you're going to be back up? It's just a planned outage from nine to eleven, but they seem to happen more frequently in this area. And this building is unaffected by it. And it wasn't until I took over the portfolio of provincial offenses and was over there on a court day when they had no power, when I realized and could, could in good conscience recommend to council, this is something we need.
Anything else? Yes, uh, Counselor McPhail.
Uh, Mr. Warren, through you to Brian, was it ever looked at to have just one generator that would service the whole campus or? I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at maintenance and longevity and everything else goes along with it. And that wasn't, that wasn't an option.
Yeah, through Mr. Warren to Counselor McPhail, it certainly was reviewed by staff and, and quite frankly, just cost prohibitive. Uh, the, the existing generator here at the administration building has very few hours on it. And, uh, and, uh, but more importantly, the capital cost to support that, not just a generator, but the required feedback over to P O A. It'd just be far too cost prohibitive and it was, it was, uh, cheaper to go the route that's being proposed.
That's taking into consideration the residual value of the existing generator that we have.
Which we wouldn't get much for.
Would wonder being there so sought after.
Brian, is, uh, the P O A building currently wired for standby generator?
Through Mr. Warren, it is. So it's as part of the detailed design, uh, uh, the required backup switch or standby emergency generator switch already exists. Conduit is run out to its ultimate pad location. So it's just a function of installing the generator on a brand new pad and running the required conduit or the, running the required cabling.
I'd like to see that generator.
Uh, through you, Warden. You've got on the piece there about a deferred project, Saint George Street. That's George Street, I take it? Report Stanley.
Nope. So Saint George Street, uh, extends from Wellington and connects into, uh, the city of Saint Thomas and, uh, uh, runs right beside Cowan Park, City's Cowan Park.
I would like to retract the question. Thank you.
Any, uh, any more questions, uh, for Brian at this point? Okay, shall we carry on then?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warren, through to council. Uh, now next, uh, planning and land division committee. So as council was advised during their orientation and as, uh, seen here this morning, uh, various services provided by county staff include approval of various, uh, development applications, official plan amendments, as well as providing, uh, professional opinion with, uh, in-house and, and current reliance upon external uh, professional planning advice, uh, in the absence of a manager of planning. Uh, um, provided, uh, to both our local municipalities as well as, uh, providing comments, uh, when and when required, uh, upon receipt of applications. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Hicks, at care of Republic Urbanism, uh, and his team has been supporting Elgin County, uh, uh, since, uh, January first of last year. Uh, and recruitment efforts, uh, second round of recruitment efforts to recruit a manager of planning is about to begin. And so we hope to make an announcement in that regard at some point, uh, this year. Um, so, uh, as previously mentioned, uh, consent process is administratively, administratively burdensome and we're looking to automate and, and identify efficiencies in that regard. Bill twenty-three is, uh, all council members are likely aware is, is, has presented some interesting challenges. Uh, interestingly enough, one of the comments received during, uh, the public survey was, uh, several respondents suggesting that development charges should be explored by the county. And for those that aren't aware, Elgin County currently does not have development charges. It has been a topic of past discussion. Um, so, um, in addition, and, and has potentially impacted by, uh, bill twenty-three or other matters such as conservation authorities, parkland dedication, et cetera. So, um, with respect to the survey questions, um, what sort of considerations did we make? Respondents indicated that, uh, you know, the service with respect to planning and land division uh, um, was of sufficient investment. Others indicated that it should be increased or decreased. Um, in terms of inflationary, uh, pressures on this budget, modernization of the consent application process is being, uh, is underway as we speak and we hope to announce, uh, a development in that regard. And in, in that regard, uh, the net effect will be increased capacity in, in order to process applications, greater number of applications. Uh, offsets considered, um, generally speaking, uh, this budget, the planning and, and, uh, and the land division budgets are significantly offset by application fees. Uh, that said, council still does support this mandated service in, in some regard. Uh, the other point worth noting, past councils and potentially this council may want to consider other options as it relates to land division, which, which include, but may not be limited to delegating approval authority to staff. Um, what was done differently, again, uh, uh, talked about the consent, uh, application process, modernization of that, the official plan with which, again, council will will see and, and consider before them, uh, later this year, does incorporate or will incorporate flexible policies and new policies with respect to regulations and comments received from the community. Um, continuing to monitor, work closely with our local municipal partners on planted serviced lands. And then planning for culture and responding to rapid changes. With respect to the various corporate, uh, uh, plans and initiatives, uh, those as listed there, specifically as relates to his portfolio, obviously the planning act and the privilege policy statement, uh, provides guidance as well as a new official plan, uh, will be a strategic document moving forward. Urgent items we brought forward before council on Thursday, there's, uh, a meeting of council to appoint members to the land division committee. Uh, and then again, uh, approval and endorsement of, uh, county's new official plan prior to submission to the ministry will be considered later this year. Here again are the budget slides, uh, for those looking for greater detail and tab A, starting on page sixty-two. Uh, so it's for twenty twenty-one as it relates to planning services is shown here. Twenty twenty-two and the proposed twenty twenty-three budget values. So the ask as it relates to planning portfolio loan is an ask of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. With respect to land division, uh, twenty twenty-one budget values and variances are, are shown there. Twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three comparison. And so accordingly, uh, the resulting budget is actually a decrease of seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So, uh, in summary, maintaining investment of, uh, the current service level and, and identifying opportunities to modernize and, and, and make processes more efficient and improve applicant experience through the consent process is something that staff is proposing and striving for.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions? Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, through to council with respect to enterprise. So again, here again, enter, uh, is, includes economic development tourism. So, uh, staff have and will continually, uh, endeavor to work collaboratively with our local municipal partners, looking for opportunities. Uh, also to work with our regional partners, uh, neighboring municipalities to, uh, endeavor, uh, to continually market Elgin County as a place to invest in, to live in, to grow in, et cetera. Uh, challenges, uh, facing Elgin County as a whole with, uh, enterprise-related lens includes, uh, lack of serviceable shovel-ready, uh, land. So, and, and so in this regard, as identified by previous council on the twenty twenty-two budget, uh, money's were set aside to undertake a master servicing review on behalf of all of the county and, and in partnership with each of our local municipal partners. And so if that is still the will of council, that, uh, that study uh, will proceed in twenty twenty-three. Uh, again, talked about high-speed internet. We're hearing a lot about that in terms of business traction, the need and the importance of that. Uh, other businesses are reporting, uh, the lack of transit service or, or means of getting, uh, workers to and from. Affordable housing, uh, Counselor Cook, it talked about it. We too are hearing, uh, about that and, and aim to support that in any way we can. Attraction of skilled labor, uh, we see it here at the county and, and we know businesses are struggling in that regard. Warnings of recession continue. So, uh, works in that regard underway to, uh, assist businesses through that. And then finally, again, working with our local municipalities. Terms of survey results, um, um, increased business activity is something with which respondents, uh, and certainly small business owners would, would love to see. And, and so, uh, you know, staff are, are doing what we can to help, uh, produce that, uh, that outcome, uh, whether it's assisting them through a business enterprise facilitator, through discussion on ways in which they can improve their business or connect them with, uh, other resources and or assisting with festival activities that may be occurring in each of our respective, in each of your respective municipalities. Interestingly enough, ten percent of respondents indicated support for businesses was, was, uh, of importance to them. Excellent. Um, here again, um, again, uh, it desired to increase investment, strategic investment were required in this endeavor, uh, as, as, now this is certainly a discretionary uh, item that, uh, that council has opportunities. Um, with respect to inflationary pressures, so, um, staff are continually looking to pursue senior government grant opportunities and council will be advised of an announcement here in the very near future that we're happy to make, uh, notice of. So stay tuned for that. Uh, previously mentioned in-house, uh, resource reliance, uh, again, we've got a, we've got a tremendous team that's highly skilled and, and they're doing some incredible work. And so dependence, uh, dependence, increased dependence on them, uh, will continue. Uh, digital and, and modernization of, of what they're doing and in an effort to support each of your department or each of your municipalities will, will continue to increase. or each of your municipalities will continue to increase as time goes on. Considerations with respect to offsets, you know, council may want to consider, reconsider some of its membership fees, so some of the, the costs associated with each of those memberships as indicated there and including the budget are detailed there. Reduction media advertising, we really don't do a lot, we, we've been scaling back on that effort, but that is an opportunity to reduce further funding if required, and a couple other opportunities. What would we do differently? So, certainly increased collaboration with other various departments across the organization, our partners, our neighbors will continue to, to be explored and, and expanded upon, as well as increased marketing opportunities with the city of St. Thomas. So, for example, some of our guides for this year will include city of St. Thomas content, so shared costs in that regard when it comes to marketing efforts. So, some of the strategic documents for which this department is guided by, so council last year endorsed this department's economic development tourism strategy. And so as part of that, you know, efforts are underway to continue to increase the county's creative tourism cultural sectors and, and promote Elgin County as the place to grow, live and play. Six standalone requests, so an investment in the new economic development tourism website is required. Our current host provider has provided notice that by November 2023 of this year, they no longer will be supporting our website, so investment is required in that regard. So the financial details are before you, available on in tab A, page, starting on page 68, so 2021 numbers are there, 22 and 2023 per comparison. And so the budget ask this year is an increase of $69,530. So in summary, staff are proposing continued reinvestment in this, in this department to continue to assist our local businesses, our partners and, and external agencies with both business investment, attraction, workforce development, as well as tourism. We thought I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Thank you for that report, Brian. Again, any questions for Brian on economic development? Okay, thank you. I assume we're going on with the human. Thank you, Amy.
So I'm Amy Thompson, Director of Human Resources for the county, and I oversee the HR services, including accessibility, diversity and inclusion. And a departmental overview on the next slide there. So our team of six experts is responsible for the functions listed here, providing support to our almost 500 staff across all service areas and provide accessibility services to Elgin, all Elgin and Middlesex municipalities. And challenges. So the challenge that we've highlighted on the horizon include a constantly evolving legislative landscape, which requires HR staff to stay current and shift priorities to meet new requirements. Secondly, and similar to most service areas, budgetary challenges will continue to be difficult. For example, with respect to employers experiencing a significant spike in mental health-related absences, claims and drug costs, which reinforces the need for progressive wellness supports and constructive supportive corporate culture. And finally, recruitment and retention, which you've all heard a lot about today, will continue to be challenging since vacancies do outpace qualified candidates available to fill them, which has worsened during the pandemic, and we're in an extremely competitive labor market, as everybody knows. So this does create challenges associated with positions being gapped for longer durations, and this has an impact on workloads for staff, current staff, and can have an impact on staff morale. And recruitment requires a significant workload from the HR team. We've seen significant spikes in postings year over year, especially from 2020 and through 2022. And workloads also within the, the hiring departments go up as well, onboarding and training of new staff, and then seeing a loss of productivity during the learning curve of new staff. So it's hard to quantify this within the budget, but we know this is a costly issue for the corporation. And then on the opportunities side, so a couple opportunities we've identified include the bargaining process, which we see as an opportunity to make improvements collaboratively and seek efficiencies while building upon our positive labor relations. And through a continued focus on recruitment and retention initiatives, as well as staff and leadership development, we hope to have an opportunity to compete in the war for talent. So the first question that we've all looked at, how we took into consideration survey results. So we reviewed all summary data as well as all verbatim comments received from constituents. And while the feedback wasn't directly related to the HR budget itself, we considered the feedback more broadly in relation to compensation and bargaining strategy and processes. There were also comments that identified seeking economies of scale and ensuring that there's no duplication of services. So in that respect, we are working toward a human resources shared service agreement with interested local municipal partners, where we're aiming to share and collaborate rather than adding resources. Second question. So how we took into consideration inflationary pressures, some of this is repeating from others. So we haven't historically recommended salary increases that keep pace with the annual inflation rate. This practice would have caused significant budgetary pressure, especially through 2021 through 2023. Instead, the county makes conservative recommendations for non-union cost of living increases every year. And we do take a strategic approach to collective bargaining, where our aim is to contain costs while maintaining internal and external equity and managing recruitment and retention challenges, so it truly is a balancing act there, but always with the budget top of mind. There were survey comments pertaining to county staff compensation and inflationary concerns in general, which were contemplated throughout our budget development and review. We did complete 2022 compensation review, which is scheduled to be done once per term of council. And this past year's review did show that all non-union positions were shown to be paying at 50% of market rate, which is what our policy targets there. Onto the third question. How did we consider offsets? So, part of how we considered offsets, we're not planning any new HR initiatives in 2023, but rather a continuation of initiatives that we had planned in the last couple of years, some of which were thrown off course, mostly due to pandemic shifting our priorities. So we do hope to maintain services that were currently budgeted for. Similar to finance, our budget is largely staff wages and benefit lines. So we plan to, we hope to maintain our service levels while enhancing shared service offerings and also managing escalating workloads within our current staffing complement. Many, and just to comment that a way that we consider offsets, many surrounding municipalities have started to, over the last couple of years, amend their compensation practices to pay at 55 or 60% of market, and that's how they're addressing the, the challenges with recruitment. And due to the budgetary challenges, we haven't considered making that move at this time. And instead, we seek alternative methods for employing, improving the overall employment experience. Fourth question. What can we do differently to accommodate increased costs? So we are continuously seeking opportunities for efficiency, not just at budget time, but throughout the year. One example is that we aim to improve the employment experience without significant impact to budget. So we seek low or no-cost initiatives. We utilize staff feedback received from surveys and exit interviews to develop targeted initiatives that will make the improvements that we need to. We analyze benefit costs, incident accident report statistics in order to develop improvements that will help reduce budget impacts over time. And another thing we're always looking at is evaluating the benefit plan designs. We do that during bargaining as well, where we look at the high-cost areas and aim to seek savings there. The fifth question. So how are priorities link back to the service delivery review, council strategic plan and council policies? So the service delivery review specifically included a recommendation to seek shared service agreements. So that continues to be a priority for our service area and as well as implementation of the new human capital management system. So that will replace HR's system and have us tied in with finance and other systems, which will eliminate some duplication of effort and entry into the systems there. So that's where I mean to streamline processes across different service areas with that system. And under council's strategic priorities of serving Elgin and investing in Elgin, our priority to create a health human resources recruitment and retention plan fits in well under here, as well as the implementation of the organizational culture improvement initiatives that we've started over the last couple of years and hope to continue throughout the current year. And the last question there. So while these listed items are corporate budgetary items, they're not specifically within the HR budget, but fall into our purview. I'll be bringing more information to council to consider these items, including benefit plan costing and the 2023 plan renewal outlook in the very near future, probably early February. And information relating to escalating disability claims experience to make council aware of those cost challenges that we have there. And lastly, the 2023 non-union cost of living increase recommendation will be coming in a detailed report for council's consideration also in the near future. Then we've got the budget slides similar to the other departments. So in order to see this information more clearly in the binders, ours, HR is under tab A, page 71 to 73, and then tab B, page 788 is our 10-year plan. So the first slide reviews are variance in 2021, where portions of operating costs were underspent. And this is blamed on the pandemic, where we weren't able to tackle some of the planned initiatives that we had presented to council. So many initiatives were started, but we, we have work to do there, still continuing. And then looking ahead at 2022 and into 2023. So the budget ask shows the variance over 2022 to 2023. It shows where we're forecasting to end 2022 and ultimately will be under budget as initiatives were started, but remain incomplete and carrying forward into 2023. The variance comes from the cost of living placeholder for salary and benefits and a couple minor changes, including office supplies coming out of the HR budget into the corporate budget and a slight increase to photocopying just to match increases in the costs associated. But otherwise, we didn't look to do any kind of inflationary increase across any other budget lines. And then the next slide shows a summary. So our one revenue line comes from the provision of accessibility services to Middlesex County and all of their local municipal partners. And then, very similar to finance, our expense line is largely wages and benefits for six staff, with some operating budget for staff and corporate development initiatives and ongoing recruitment and retention initiatives. So in summary, the HR budget request is essentially to remain flat year over year, except for anticipated cost of living increases just to salary and benefits. Otherwise, we've not included inflationary estimates. We plan to maintain current budget in order to continue our service delivery at the current level, develop shared service agreements across interested local municipal partners, and carry on organizational development initiatives that we started in 2021 and through 2022. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone have any questions for Amy and HR? Nothing at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. So up next is the Director of Financial Services will review the current position, and we will try to identify what next steps are and, and get some direction from council. So that's what to expect now.
Thank you, Julie, through you two members of council. So the wrap-up and next steps, if we could go one more slide, please. We'll take you through this slide. This will show you the net income total, showing a positive perceived surplus number of $10,107,383. Within that number, we have an amortization of $12,384,618. We have OSIF funding of $2.3 million and the federal gas tax of 1.6 and the Terrace Lodge redevelopment construction funding subsidy of 1.7. If we back those out for the use of capital, we end up with levy for capital projects at roughly $16 million, $16.8 million for the 2023 budget year. We move two slides up, Stephanie, to the next chart. If we take that $16 million and we take our capital budget of $23 million and we subtract that off, we still have a need of $6.2 million. We add back our OSIF and our federal gas tax funding, we end up having $2.2 million left to fund. We have a debt principal repayment of $1.122 million for the Terrace Lodge or for the $12 million capital debt that we already have incurred in 2021 and 2022, which we discussed earlier. Which then leaves us with some unfunded portion of, of the budget. If we can add back the 1.7 in the Terrace Lodge redevelopment construction fund subsidy, and then set aside some of our capital that we have invested for at the higher interest rate. Now that we have some higher interest rates, we can also take advantage of that for getting more income. We can offset that by about $22,000 or more throughout the year, which leaves us with approximately $1.5 million to fund through capital surplus or reserves. If we can go to the next slide, Stephanie, with the chart. Within this envelope, we also heard from Brian Michelli that there is a potential for $61,500, $61,500 that we can put towards this plan as well. And if we do that, we will end up having capital levy approximately 41% or capital of our levy being used for capital. And we can come in at the starting point for today's presentation at 3.6% approximately in that range for the levy and anticipated growth of 1.73 being set aside, which is a little bit less than the 2% that we had targeted. But this does allow some of the growth to flow through into the plan so that we have a lower tax rate. So at this point, this was a starting point and certainly not something that you have to adopt or address. But some quick facts for you on the next slide. Approximately 41% of our 2023 levy is for capital purposes. To increase or decrease the levy by 1%, we would have to find plus or minus $420,000. Last growth, the, the growth in last
Last growth, the the growth in last year was approximately two point five percent, which amounted to over over one million dollars. And so the points for discussion today that we would like to hear from council is did this budget meet with your expectations? What changes might you still require from us at this time? What questions might still be unanswered for you? And what additional information might be required for a next meeting?
Okay, thank you for that summary. Discussion. Questions? Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Jennifer. When looking at growth, projected growth, has there been any consideration to the extra tax revenue from Amazon? Is that still a? It's out there. We don't know when.
We did not include that in this presentation. Simply because we don't know the details of when that will be happening. We don't know what that amount will be. So that is certainly opportunity for potentially more revenue that is not considered at this time.
We're unlikely to realize any benefits in twenty twenty-three, and so we can look forward to something, I think, in twenty twenty-four, but not before.
Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I I think there were a few departments who alluded to additional information being provided in closed session. So I feel like I can't really fully comment on what's being out here until we've had the closed session.
Yeah, I concur. Any more comments or questions at this time? Realizing, of course, that we've got another go or two at this document. Okay, everyone's satisfied for this point? So the recommendation then, Julie.
So the recommendation is to use council's feedback to inform and and direction to inform the next steps. And I feel like we're not quite there yet, Mr. Warden. So perhaps we could come back to that.
Would you, I think, in order to to better inform council, we have some steps that we need to take within the closed session in order to come back out. Can you defer this motion? Until after?
Of course.
That would be a way to go about it. All right, thank you. Are we moving on to section seven then? Good, because I kept losing the budget in office.
Good thing we had print copies.
Not the, not the presentation. That's all right. All right, we're moving on then with item seven point one, items for consideration, seven point one-one. Letter from the town of Elmer regarding the request for review of lower tier representation by county council. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. You know, as I, as I read that letter, I I thought to myself that, you know, there's, there's a lot more to unpack than just this letter. And and so I'm not even in a position to really comment on it because I don't really know very much about the process. What's involved and what the costs are. And certainly from my perspective, I would think that we should all consider referring this back to staff to come back.
So we receive it for information and I would assume to direct staff to bring this report back.
At one of council's February meetings.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Warden, just for clarification, it won't be specific to one individual municipality, correct?
Well, I would assume that the report that they're bringing back be somewhat generic in nature. Process.
Yeah.
Costs.
Sure, that's, that's great. Thank you very much.
So I can, I have prepared a little bit of background on this, if if I may, just take two seconds. So the composition of council was set by the province in nineteen ninety-nine at the time of amalgamation. And and it has remained unchanged since. So there is no requirement to review its composition, but it is allowed to do so under the municipal act. And that process is initiated by county council. And council cannot be compelled by a lower tier to undertake this review. So it just has to be a decision made at the county council level. Changes to council composition are given effect by bylaw and council's composition is included within our procedural bylaw. A couple of other things included within the recommendation from Elmer that will be addressed within the staff report that comes forward to council in February or that the recommendation that this be administered externally, not nece- I don't necessarily share that that opinion at this time. I think this could be administered objectively internally, using our legal services team and administrative staff to find savings there. And I can provide a copy of the provincial order in council, which did establish county council originally. So I, we do have it and it, it does. The current composition consists of the mayors of the town of Elmer, the township of Southold, and each new municipality. And the deputy mayors of council and the new municipality of Yarmouth, Port Stanley and Belmont. And the new municipality of Malahide, South Door Chester and Springfield. So it takes us back to nineteen ninety-eight at a time when I know at least Counselor McPhail was on council. So so we would be pleased to bring forward a report not specific to the needs of Elmer, but from the county's perspective about seeking council's direction to undertake a review of its composition. Not for the sake of any one municipality. I think we keep it simple. So be it resolved that staff or that the the letter from the town of Elmer regarding a request for review of lower tier representation on county council be received for information. And further that staff be directed to provide a follow-up report regarding composition of county councils, council and changes there too at at one of council's meetings in February.
Five items. Right down there that anyone wishes to speak about? Ask questions of? Can we have a motion to receiving pile?
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the municipal act to discuss the following matters under municipal act, section two thirty-nine-two. So under the heading budget considerations nine point one, we have closed session item nine point one point one, contract negotiations two thirty-nine-two K. In camera item number nine point one point two, financial services, contract negotiations two thirty-nine-two E and K. Item nine point one point three, information technology services, contract negotiations. Section two thirty-nine-two K. Nine point one point four is EMS contract negotiations, and that's two thirty-nine-two K. Nine point one point five, road maintenance agreement, contract negotiations, that's two thirty-nine-two K. Number nine point two, litigation matters, and that's two thirty-nine-two E and F. And section nine point three, which is correspondence, and that's two thirty-nine-two K and B. Or sorry, just two thirty-nine-two B.
Welcome back. Use the microphone. I've looked for a mover and seconder to rise and report. I'll get there. Noble and Counselor Sloan, all in favor? That's carried. Sorry, I'm taking your job. So you'll take us through them, please?
Sure, for closed session, item nine point one point one, which is contract negotiation negotiations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Sloan, Counselor Crockett, all in favor? That's carried.
For nine, for closed session item nine point one point two, financial services, contract negotiations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, mover and seconder, Counselor Jones, Counselor Hens, all in favor? That's carried.
For closed session item nine point one point three, I T S services, contract negotiations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Thank you, mover and seconder, please. And Counselor Sloan, Counselor Noble. All in favor? That's carried.
For closed session item nine point one point four, EMS contract negotiations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Okay, mover and seconder, please. Counselor McPhail, Counselor Shiger, all in favor? Thank you, all. Okay.
For nine point one point five, road maintenance agreement, contract negotiations, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Hens, Counselor Jones will second, all in favor? Carried.
Resolved that in camera item nine point two, litigation matters be deferred.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble and Counselor Sloan, all in favor? That's carried.
For closed session item nine point three, which is correspondence, be it resolved that staff proceed as directed and send a no, sorry, be it resolved that the warden proceed as directed and send a letter of support to
So I mean, I gotta write it?
The federal government regarding the federal cannabis act review.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Woodner and Counselor Shiger, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So are we circling back to the budget now? Which was item six point one five. Whereas you're looking for some direction. Okay. It's been a long afternoon and a lot of information through the closed session. Staff are looking for direction on on the budget. Is there anything there that you want them to do? There were some things for
We have some questions.
Have you got a potential resolution or anything?
Well, the gen- general resolution was that feedback regarding the draft budget be received as direction to amend the budget as we prepare for your January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Though at this point in time, we don't really have any direction to make any amendments to that that draft budget. So the critical questions were, didn't, did the draft that we presented today meet with council's expectations? What changes are you looking for us to undertake over the next several days so that we can prepare and present this to you at your January twenty-fifth meeting? Do you have questions that are still unanswered and require additional information to be brought forward? And I wouldn't mind having a conversation about how we would communicate this budget out to the community in order to meet council's expectations or engage in so those are the key takeaways that Jen and I are looking for in order to ensure that our executive peers
Yeah, I saw Counselor Woodner down there.
Yeah, thank you. One change I would like to see, and Malahide does it, when we have a tax increase, how does it relate to the average home? To me, that means more than anything. Like, it's gonna be fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with you. I'm not sure we're there yet, but I agree with what you're saying. Yeah, Counselor Jones. I agree, you're just kicking the can down the road and it's gonna come back as a bigger can to deal with. Counselor McPhail.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council, specifically Deputy Warden McPhail, I would say that in terms of the numbers that were presented, not substantially. In terms of how we generated those numbers, yes. So it would change what budget lines are called and and how we identify those services as discussed, but otherwise the, the budget wouldn't change substantially.
No. One particular department.
Yeah, or two, yep. Good question.
Okay, Counselor Shiger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So my comments would be then maybe more towards public consultation or so because I I agree this, this was a lot of work. This was great information. We can really sink our teeth in. So kudos for that. And then the next stage would be to put it in a format for, you know, public consumption, like user friendly. And I'm thinking of a a couple of things. There was an infographic that I know staff did. And we didn't do it last year, but in twenty twenty-one, we did it and which provides the overview. And then you could follow that up with the departmental pages. So that was very useful. And I remember also last year, your summary tables like right now are a little bit more raw because it's it's more for like, this is the legwork. And and I know last year when we were getting close to adopting the budget, there were two summary tables. I vaguely remember that really worked. Walked you through the logic of how you ended up with the the increase with then also added Walked you through the logic of how you ended up with the the increase with then also added um. Examples of impact on specific classes. So that'd be my second recommendation, and and to that end. I've been looking at um other municipalities, I've been looking at municipalities that have an even more complex budget to say, well, how did they communicate a sixteen billion dollar? Budget, and uh there are some good templates out there, even the city of London, like departmental, like page by page, it's very clear, and I feel like. You already have all that information. It would be just repurposing it in a different format, there's just one page. And somehow I I found that as one example, perhaps there are even many, many others um that you could use, so that that would be just the next stage. Just getting ready for communication and and getting some feedback. Thank you.
All good comments. I wonder, are we too quick with the one-page infographic? Just, this is uh by putting the draft budget out of a consultation. Then I recall when we did this, we do advance, this is finished product.
I agree, however, I would say as long as it says proposed. Right, it it still gives you a snapshot before you sink your teeth into the departmental, so some sort of overview this. And just to say, this is all that's being proposed, it's not passed yet. So I I agree, there's still value to understand because you know, and perhaps for those who haven't seen it, but it's it's commonly used, and it shows exactly. Where your dollar is going and what the impact is on you as a ratepayer and then. Um so personally, I I even in when we're at the proposal stage, at the con- sort of consultation stage, there's value in providing that visual snapshot.
Well, okay, sorry, pardon me. First of all, I concur, it was very well done presentation, but I was thinking it was the first iteration, if you will. Um you know, I don't know what two point nine looks like. Um so that's, as long as those discussions are ongoing. Because I think we have, uh you know, Counselor Jones makes a comment about the price of doing business, sure. But we have a capable team that sometimes know how to do business for less, so just curious how the process goes and would like to learn through this, so. Thanks for the presentation, it was uh very helpful, someone who is new. Thank you.
Kind of what I envisioned too, Julie, is that uh. In preparation on releasing the documents for. I have the budget time, after having a good chance to consider today's. But we may not be prepared right now to give you a. But we'd like to, after we've had a chance to reconsider for. You know, cogitate around in there. Thank you, Mr. Ward. Uh through you to uh Jennifer, I guess, uh in your um. Monthly meeting with the lower tier treasures, uh is uh the county budget something of a shared uh topic as to giving them an indication of what? We're kind of thinking at our level here, or is it uh our budget is our budget's and our budget is their budget?
We literally just finished this, like days, it's been ongoing every single day. Yeah, oh, for sure, yeah. We just didn't have anything to share. And so, you know, that was a great question, we were all asking of each other, like, what are you doing for cola increases, and we all worked well together. But from the county's perspective, we didn't have that number until we published the agenda. Yeah.
Yes, Julie.
Uh just a quick comment. So in terms of what uh council will receive on the twenty fifth, it's really. Uh more finalized and repackaged presentation, uh so we can eliminate a lot of the orientation type material that we included. Uh make it easier for council to see some of the connections that we talked about today between long-term care and facilities, et cetera. Uh the reason why we we asked in advance about presenting to the public is not to get out ahead of council, rather. There's really our work in between budget meetings, we have five business days to produce reports, and so if it was council's expectation that this be ready to present. To the public on the twenty fifth, we wouldn't be ready, and so this gives us an opportunity to do some proactive work and maybe share some drafts with you for your consent. On the twenty fifth before we issue everything out to the public. So thank you for for this information, and just to speak to uh say, the city of London business cases. I am really, I really like those business cases. Essentially, it's a two pager that says, who are we, what do we do, why do we do it? So mandatory discretionary are essential. An overview of the budget with those simplified charts that Counselor Shiger mentioned. Service highlights, which only mentions changes, risks and challenges for the current year. And then contact information. So if any member of the public wanted to know about engineering and transportation, they could reach out to Brian Lima. And get information there. So it is, it is cleanly packaged and a great uh, a great sample. And we will look at others and bring forward what we think is the best for Elgin County for your review.
Okay, great. So have you got enough now for a uh motion?
Well, I think now we have the feedback and the direction, so I think the motion stays the same. So be it resolved that council feedback regarding the draft budget and departmental priorities. Be received a staff direction to amend the budget for presentation at a future meeting.
Wonderful. Mover and secondor. Counselor Zager, Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Now, we're down to.
Eleven.
Eleven. Motion to adopt recommendations from the committee of the whole.
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole.
Need a mover and secondor, please. Counselor Woodner, Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? Carried. Council committee bylaw.
Um you have a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty three dash zero one, being a bylaw to define the mandate and meeting procedures for committees established by the corporation of the county of Elgin. And to repeal bylaw nineteen dash forty and bylaw twenty dash twenty.
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor McPhail, Counselor Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. So we're down to uh the confirming bylaw?
Be it a first, second, and third read of bylaw twenty three dash zero two, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin. At the January tenth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Hens, Counselor Crockett will second. All in favor? That's carried, and we get to everyone's favorite.
Be it be it resolved that we do know adjourn at four twenty five P M to meet again on January. Twenty fifth. At two P M? No. Oh, on Thursday. I, yeah, I emailed you about that.
So we're doing the twelfth.
The twelfth at two P M for a special meeting.
There we go. Mover and secondor, please. Okay, Counselor Sloan and and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everyone. It's been a really lengthy day, and for those who tuned in with us all day, you have a lot of patience. So thanks for joining us.